Okay, you want the in-seat, huh? You want a quick exit, I don't know. Delivered or not? Oh, you do, oh, you know, okay. Yeah, in the winter time, I have to wear a vest or coat and it's cold. It's cold. Yeah, it's cold. Let's see. Yeah, 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 I'm right up here.
Okay, so a few minutes after six, we're going to call to order the September 2023 meeting of the Homewood Planning Commission. If we could start out with a roll call, please.
All right. Mr. Henninger. All right. Ms. Wilcott. Mr. Harwell.
Here.
Mr. Rispinto.
Here.
Mr. Armstead.
Here.
Mr. Broadhead.
Here.
Ms. Andrus.
Here.
Mr. Goulas.
Here.
And Mr. Roberts.
Here.
You might want to call Mr. Henninger's name again. Okay, well, moving on, let's, um, the next item is the approval of the July minutes. Did everyone have a chance to review those minutes? I'd say they looked good to me. Undertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I'm going to abstain, Mr. Chair, since I was not here in July.
And I will abstain as well.
Who's the second one?
Mr. Goulas.
I was not here.
That's fine.
All right, so the minutes are approved. Communications, Mr. Armstead, do you have any communications as vice chair? All right, I have some, just from, for tonight. We're probably, we have a lot of people here tonight. We, we have decided as a committee to, or commission, rather, to move the new business, the Piggly Wiggly case, to the end, and then do the first two, the first two cases, which are both related to Bagby Drive, to do those first. Other thing I'd like to say is, we do, again, we do have a lot of people here tonight. We want, obviously, it's a public hearing, so we want participation from everyone. I will say that we, given the number of people, if we could do a couple of things. One, if we could limit our comments to three minutes. And two, if we could be, or try to avoid being repetitive to the extent we can. We've all reviewed, I think, thirty-something, I've lost track of the number of letters coming in with comments on that, on the Piggly Wiggly case. So we've read all that, we're familiar with the concerns. That said, we encourage you to come forward, but again, try not to be too long-winded or too repetitive. All right. And with that, we're going to start, again, with our new business. There are two combined cases, cases RZ 230901 and RZ 230902 relating to five, fifty-five, sixty-five, and eighty-five Bagby Drive. The applicant is John Chapman. If you could come forward and present your case. And in doing so, and this, this concerns everyone here tonight who comes forward to speak, if you could, in addition to telling us your name and address, if you could write that in the ledger on the, on the diocote, that would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you for allowing us the chance to be before you this evening. I'm John Chapman with Ferris Properties. We're located at 2400 Arlington Avenue here in Birmingham. Just very short backstory on our group. We are a diversified real estate investment management development firm. We operate primarily in the multifamily sector, so primarily apartments. We operate in the states of Alabama and Mississippi currently. We're very proud to operate several apartment communities in the city of Homewood. And we certainly enjoy our relationship with, excuse me, with the city of Homewood, as well as our current operations on Bagby Drive, which we can discuss briefly this evening as well. In more recent times, we have become involved in community impact work. And so we're very proud to be participating with very high-quality operators located in our local municipalities and state. Several of those operators are going to be intertwined with what we're proposing to bring to Bagby Drive. And I think you'll agree with me that the impact that these guys are providing to constituents of yours, to friends, neighbors of ours, and for those in the local community, as well as the state and region, is truly impactful. As it was referenced, we do have two projects tonight, so we kind of have a multitude of team members. Just very quickly, the development team, we have development team members, we have advisory board members, we have operating partners. Shoal Engineering is doing civil engineering work for us on both projects. Architectural is split between CCR and KPS, architectural firms, both of whom we have great relationships with, and we've worked on multiple projects. Brassfield and Gorey was our construction partner of choice for seventy-five Bagby, which is home to Magic City Acceptance Academy, which will be referred to tonight, and their upper post-contractor for these projects as well. Dave Arich and Associates Landscaping is performing landscaping work for us. We have Karen Musgrove, who is CEO of Birmingham AIDS Outreach, which is known as BAO. You'll hear referred to tonight, and she is also, I'll say, CEO of the Magic City Acceptance Academy as well, since that's a, since BAO is a parent organization for that particular entity. We also have Beth Zions, who is with us tonight. She is CEO at Triumph Services, which is a locally-based group who's doing very impactful work, and who will be, play an integral role in our redevelopment of fifty-five, sixty-five Bagby. Tricia Kirk is also here with us tonight. She, many of you will know her from her former world as the director at the Exceptional Foundation. She's now currently a committed and compassionate community member, and she certainly knows a lot about the, the impact that this project can bring to the folks who will be residents at fifty-five, sixty-five Bagby. Sorry, my notes are scattered here, and I'm doing my best to try to remain concise, which is something I struggle with. We have two projects tonight, and so I'm, I'm, I think it's probably the, the best thing is to kind of split those up and maybe address each to their own. They are very different, but they also have lots of similarities and lots of intertwined impact to those marginalized in our communities. I think it's very important that I first need to state that I don't think we would be here now, and we would not have been here in January of twenty-one, when we requested the rezoning of seventy-five Bagby, would it not have been for the relocation and redevelopment of the Homewood Police Department and the Public Safety Center at the corner of West Valley and Bagby? That truly was a turn of events, and it certainly started a chain reaction for us and our interest level in Bagby. Bagby has long been a blighted area. We do feel like the Magic City Acceptance Academy that we redeveloped in 2021 certainly has changed things for the better on Bagby, and we believe strongly that our projects were proposed will continue that change on Bagby. Maybe let me first start with the planned rezoning and redevelopment of eighty-five Bagby. And I don't know what we have by way of slide. So as I mentioned here on the screen before you, kind of gives you the full picture of Bagby Drive from West Valley all the way up through Goodwin Crest. We do now, as I stand before you, own and will own all parcels, beginning with three-twenty-eight West Valley, continuing all the way through fifty-five Bagby, which is the northernmost parcel that fronts on Bagby Drive. Seventy-five Bagby, which again is the parcel that we sought to rezone, and we're successful in that, and redeveloped as the Magic City Acceptance Academy, is at seventy-five Bagby. It's kind of highlighted here on the slide. So the project that we're before you tonight, related, directly related to Magic City Acceptance Academy, is eighty-five Bagby. And that would be the parcel just to the south of seventy-five. The existing structure that's at eighty-five Bagby is very similar to the existing structure that we encountered at seventy-five Bagby. We intend, during our redevelopment of seventy-five Bagby, we created and constructed the site, site storm shelter, which is required by the state now for academic purposes. So we plan to connect eighty-five Bagby to seventy-five by way of a pedestrian pathway. And as we get into the site discussion, I think I'm going to ask Chuck, who is here from CCR, to join me at the podium, and he can walk us through the specifics of the site. Generally speaking, there's not a whole lot of change to the footprint of the building. Really, there's no change to the footprint of the building and the site itself. The connectivity path and the bridge that would be created to connect the two is really the largest change to the site that will be made.
Good evening, all. I'm Chuck Smith, and I'm here representing CCR Architecture.
Mr. Smith, I'm sorry, before you get started, do you mind writing your name down on the pad there?
Of course, yes, sir.
If I don't say it now, I'll forget too, so.
Absolutely. Eighty-five Bagby is the, the site immediately adjacent to the existing Magic City Acceptance Academy. The building is nearly identical. It's a three-story concrete structure. The school has asked for some more classrooms. They've got demand that exceeds their, their capacity right now. And so the plan is to connect that building with the existing using a bridge. The bridge will help keep the students off the vehicular way. And it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a structure very similar to the one that was built for the, the nearby police headquarters to connect, on the back of their building, to connect to their parking lot. That will connect them directly to the monitored lobby of the existing school. And the second and the third floors of the lower building at eighty-five Bagby will be occupied by educational activity, adding a dozen classrooms and a science lab, along with other necessary facilities. Each of those floors constitutes fourteen thousand square feet, and the first floor will remain in use as a business occupancy. The parking will be shared between the two, and we've calculated that exceeds the required amount of parking for the new use. And the storm shelter will be, will be added to accommodate those new students.
Are there any other questions related to the site that CCR might speak to?
We'll, we'll ask questions after the public portion.
Okay, understood. Further, I guess I'd like to speak to the request to rezone to mixed use, okay, versus the existing. The existing zoning on this parcel, I believe, is C1, very similarly to when we were before the commission and council in our rezoning of seventy-five Bagby for purposes of the original school's structure. There's a multitude of uses that are to be performed under roof. While Chuck indicated the school functions, and there's some, I would say, school-plus functions that would be undertaken in, on floors two and three, the first floor is to remain offices and would generally be used for mental health, mental health counseling, and lots of deliverables related to mental health. So to speak to the uses of what's going on under roof, I would ask at this time if Karen Musgrove, who is CEO of Birmingham AIDS Outreach, could join at the podium to address those items.
How are y'all? Karen Musgrove, I'm the CEO of BAO and then the Magic City Acceptance Academy. They are two separate organizations, but BAO is the parent organization of the academy. So that's how they work together. So the new building, eighty-five, will be an extension of our mental health services. So currently, right now, at the Magic City Wellness Center, we employ six licensed therapists, and we provide free mental health to the community. And we have found a need, especially since COVID, that mental health is an issue that is just, the need isn't being addressed within the city. I don't think anybody could meet all the needs. But we have been, we have decided that that is our mission of our organization, to expand our mental health services with our licensed therapists. So we'll be putting that inside of the building as well, in addition to the social workers and mental health providers that we have at the school and at the Wellness Center on Thirty-second and Fourth. We will also extend our Magic City Research Institute, which is an institute of PhDs who do extensive research on behavioral research with Yale, University of Alabama, Birmingham, the University of Chicago, and Pittsburgh. And we really just look at what motivates people to change, mental health needs in the community, and any other kind of research that's connected to the population that we serve. And then we publish our findings and hope to make a difference in the community. So it's looking at mental health, the research institute, and kind of the school, and it's all connected. So that is our plan for that building.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's right, you should be back up. And you'll see, as we discuss tonight, Karen is kind of the interconnected party of all the, the parcels on Bagby. And we're, we're very pleased to be Karen's development partner, and we've enjoyed a great relationship with Karen and her organization for a lot of years now. I guess, not having any questions at this time, I maybe would move over to the second case, which involves fifty-five, sixty-five Bagby. And this one.
Our agenda, yeah, fifty-five, sixty-five was first. I think we've got, I think we've got this straight. When we vote, we'll make sure we know which ones are working.
Okay, understood, sorry. And that certainly is a confusing piece as well. But there are two parcels, but, but, you know, the plan through this would be to resurvey things and have that all as one parcel, and it would, it would become certainly one community. And candidly, this project is the one that, that has a few more moving parts, and I think it's more important that we all understand exactly what we're proposing there, and that we help control kind of the narrative as it relates to the multifamily component that would be contained within the mixed use under the building there at fifty-five, sixty-five.
I mean, I think it was, makes sense to present both of them, and then we could take questions, and then open it up to the public to address both cases, unless you think that there's some reason to.
I really think it would be better to, to discuss each case separately, take a vote on each case, and not possibly confused with too many facts that are not related to one property as opposed to the other, so.
I would agree with that, if that's okay.
I think it'd be better.
Make the minutes a whole lot cleaner, for sure.
That's right.
Okay, if that makes sense, we'll, we'll hold off at least on fifty-five, sixty-five for now.
Certainly.
And if you're finished with eighty-five, we will open up the public portion. So with that said, and before we do that, and this applies to both sets of cases here tonight, both with respect to the rezoning requests that we're dealing with now, and then the requested development plan and rezoning later with Piggly Wiggly. We are an advisory board, we provide our recommendations to city council. If, if the, if the cases are later presented to city council, they'll make the final determination as to whether those cases are approved. I just want everyone to be clear on that before we get into those. So with that said, we're going to open up the public portion of the hearing with respect to RZ 0902. So if you are here to speak on this case, please come forward now and share what you have to say. All right, well, seeing no one, we'll close the public portion and open it up for questions on, on the eighty-five, eighty-five Bagby.
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I did want to comment on the point that Mr. Chapman made about the police station and sort of the anchoring of that corner, that area, and doing its intended purpose, which was to sort of let development, you know, begin around it. And I think seventy-five Bagby has been a great example of taking a building that was absolutely empty and ugly and sad and full of asphalt, and it is now full of life. And that is what you ask for when you do rezoning. That is what, that is a successful case of taking a building and rezoning it to mixed use. So I just want to give everyone sort of that background when that came to us in 2021. But that was, I would look back on that now and say that was a success.
It was a huge success, and it makes me feel safer every single day, knowing that I have those kiddos in that space, but having the police department across the street, and we've had several, there was a 911 call that was made that they thought was at our school, which it wasn't. The police department, the Homewood Police Department, came in and acted so professionally, and it was something that you never want to happen, but we're so glad that it did, because everybody got to see what happens if there is an emergency. And I cannot say enough thank you to the police department, knowing that they're just right there. And I think that it's just going to, I mean, it just, just adds so much energy to that space, to the hill, and, in a good way. So you're exactly right, so.
Yeah, I've heard the saying is that it does help clean up that area, which often fails, right? And in some ways, it's funny, it helps, but doing is good, but I'm having difficulties with, why, why we're using mixed use versus institutional. What can you get when you've got institutional allows for both the religious, the schools and the university research and the hospitals, right? So it covers that, so why are we looking at mixed use? It would be making it a little bit easier just to put it in the district that covers both things. Continued uses, at least, it would hurt the test.
Okay. Well, I certainly don't intend to ask for more than we need. And certainly what we're proposing to occur under the roof is what, what would go on there. I believe it was our opinion that mixed use was, in fact, needed for certain of the mental health deliverable pieces that would be going on there, which are non-clinical in nature. They're much more office-specific type uses. And then with Karen's Research Institute, which is the same thing that we discussed with the city at seventy-five Bagby. Again, that was the same Research Institute function that was going on. Again, that was the same research institute function that was going on under that roof that will be occurring under this one as well. And it was determined at that time that mixed use would be the most appropriate. If I remember correctly, as well, and this is several years ago now, but that mixed use was kind of the long-range intended plan for this area, and that this was in keeping with that proposed zoning overlay.
Fred, can I, this is probably I too, not, not very.
I'm sorry, what? He, I was looking at the.
Industrial three, which to me, I think I'm just misinterpreting this, right? But I two is schools, right? And I three is medical, hospital, et cetera. I think my, I three incorporates everything from I two, maybe wrong in my interpretation.
Can I jump in real quick? It's not an industrial.
Industrial institution.
Is, yeah, it's, it's an institutional use, yes.
Right, this is what I two is.
Right. I just wanted to clarify, since you said industrial.
I say, no, not a part of the institution.
Yeah.
Mr. Chapman's right, the land use plan does call for a mixed use development. We've included that map in your package of information. I, I think the MXD just allows for that more flexibility and to address some of these multiple uses. I think that's, that's where we're coming from, and this.
And I guess the challenge of mixed use allows everything, right?
It doesn't allow everything, but a variety of uses, yeah.
The problem, yeah, the problem with going with, with just an institutional zoning for this particular property is the off, I mean, it would allow for offices that were associated with the school, but if they're going to use the first floor for uses or offices that aren't related to the school's operation, then that wouldn't be allowed.
Medical, hospital, other schools, college.
Well, it's neither a hospital nor.
Yeah, nothing. Yeah, so, so the research is more.
Trying to, to me, when you have mixed use, it needs to be a group. Because there's no other way to do it.
Yeah.
And it looks like here, there's a way to do it. It makes you all of a sudden just opens up Pandora's box, which you historically have commissioned, and it has to, not say it's the right thing or wrong thing, I'm trying to, except I'm trying to prevent the use of what you intend to do, which to me is that it's only a mixed use opens up Pandora's box to do a whole lot of things.
So the, so the research institute, it really truly is a gathering of data, and then inputting, it's just offices where my researchers sit, and then input data and manipulate the data and then publish the data. So sometimes when people think of research, think about, like, you know, people doing medical experiments and stuff, that is not what this is. This is behavioral surveys and questionnaires, and how do people make decisions, and why do they go to school, why do they not go to school, stuff like that. So, so, and then even from a mental health perspective, it's still not medical. We're not putting people in hospitals.
Maybe if you could speak to, to the mental health providers that would be.
Yeah, so.
Performing their services on the ground level, how those would be.
Yeah, so you're a licensed professional counselor, licensed to the state of Alabama, you're providing just mental health counseling, so that comes in the form of individual counseling, or it could be family counseling or child counseling, but it's, you know, an hour session once a week, once a month, and it stays on that level. It never goes to a level of where we would have to, you know, house somebody that would, we would send somebody to Children's or to UAB for stuff like that. Just your typical, what you think of a mental health therapist.
And I think it's important to understand that those providers would be third-party providers and not under Karen's umbrella. I think that's the concern, if I remember correctly.
Is it thinking that there's enough gray in terms of what might be provided on the first floor that mixed use would be a bigger umbrella to cover everything? Is that what you're?
That's right. And, you know, Karen is, Karen will be operating under a charter issued from the state of Alabama, Charter Board Commission, which will also have further limitations to give some comfort to the city about what could or could not occur in close proximity to her school, if that's a concern, I think that's.
I mean, I mean, there's always the concern that, you know, an Applebee's is going to pop up at the first floor, and I obviously don't think that's realistic with, without the rest of that properties, that contagious properties are being, excuse me, are being used, but just probably to poorly articulate, I think, what may be some of the concerns, but.
Sure.
You know, it's just like, I have no real problem with what you intend to use for, I just always get concerns, it was like mixed use, because that's a different animal.
Sure.
If the commission would feel more comfortable with their recommendation, you can always request a conditional rezoning, MXD with conditions, and you could, you know, move forward with your recommendation with those conditions, excluding some uses, limiting it to just specific uses, if, if that would make you more comfortable with the MXD designation.
Does the applicant have to proffer that?
I don't think, I think we're certainly open to that, we just need to make sure, you know, Karen's activities aren't.
Restricted.
Aren't restricted to a point where.
Right.
It would cause operational issues, that we're certainly. And Fred, I don't remember if seventy-five Bagby had any, if there were conditions attached to that MXD, I don't believe they were.
Back in twenty, twenty-one.
You're having to tell them that truth.
That's true. That's right.
Exactly. It's not a still part of it, but still, it's one of those things, if you need to break, you got a zoning that already allows for what you intend to use of this, right? Let's put it in that.
Fred.
Great, great, open door.
So with an MXD, they, they're required to submit a development plan. If any of this changes, would they have to come back to this body and ask for a change in that development plan? So what we're approving tonight cannot change without us reapproving another development.
Yeah, council would go forward and approve a development plan, and if there were changes, then yeah.
So if they change their use after tonight, they would have to come back to this body in the council.
Are you changing use or changing the actual design?
That's a good question.
Change, change, if you use, it's what's allowed, right? It's affecting, is it changing construction or? Right.
That's a good question.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
Do you see my challenge that I've got? I want to say yes, but.
If they want to, if they wanted to tear the building down in ten years and reconstruct, what, twenty-eight, thirty-two thousand square feet with the same uses that they're currently wanting to operate under, then they would still have to come back to you guys for a change in the development plan, because it's new construction on the site.
Right. The site, you didn't change the site with the part of the other.
That's right, less than, less than ten percent of a change. Great, I'm sorry, greater than ten percent of a change.
The development plan doesn't limit uses.
So if they wanted, if, if they, if Karen wanted to move out and Applebee's wanted to move their headquarters in and all their restaurants, that would require a change in development. Well, I just, I just follow Stuart's example. I hate that we're picking on Applebee's.
My point is, is I'm trying to figure out, solve, solve an issue, like, three, like, to be left out. I guess the charter limitations are about that, because that.
I, no, we don't. I don't know.
Just curious what that would frame up, what that would frame up for uses.
Oh, the charter school, oh, the charter school limitations. So we'll have to, the design will have to be approved by the charter school commission. They're just not going to allow, like, a, and the, and some, something that would, that need to be by the school to be by the school, so that would be the limitations. And then also, too, we have to keep in mind that it's a school, and so we can, there are certain individuals that can't be around a certain amount of space of the school, so we can't have, you know, those kind of activity as well. So we are very restricted, so that's why, you know, it's, it's, it's our daily activity, what we do is professional organization, that's what we're housing inside, which is something you can have next to kiddos, so. Does that help?
Yeah, I guess.
Like, we can't put a school next to, like, an adult entertainment place that's down the street, like, there are certain, like, that's what I'm trying to say. Like, we have to make, you know, mental health services, office space, stuff like that, for people who are doing the same, that's involved in the school, would be surrounded by us, yeah.
Is it equal to try to have the condition be that, say, in conjunction with, that charter regulations? That at least states of school will save office, if they're to move on, so.
I don't know.
I mean, back to what Sherry said, if it makes you feel better, you can certainly condition the uses on the approval.
But again, they have to proffer that, correct? Like, that doesn't come from us, that comes from them, right?
Well, and obviously you've already explained or described that the services would be, I guess, if you were to opt to proffer that it would be limited to what you've already described, I think that'd be sufficient, I don't think we'd have to, we, we could just say as described at the meeting, right? In terms of the services, we wouldn't have to go line item delineate everything.
Well, is that something you do, because you're doing the one, and now it's just dropped?
It's probably administrative and professional offices.
Because there is, there is a, an existing tenant who deals with children, and so we, so we would have to, I mean, they don't have anything to do with us, but they do, you know, deal with family services.
Is it a mental health use?
It would be with social workers and mental health services, yeah.
So it'd be similar to what you're proposing? So it would fall under the same umbrella, you believe? Would it be under a professional and administrative office?
I think so, certainly without, without conferring with council. So maybe to that point, if, if there are restrictions or limitations proposed this evening, and that's voted upon and it moves forward, could those, could the narrative in that be tweaked as we move through the process? Or would that require coming back to planning commission, though?
No, I mean, I would, if the planning commission were to attach conditions, it's a recommendation, again, to the city council. City council may accept those, they may modify them, they may add to or say is or isn't necessary, but.
Certainly.
City council will make that final decision, not, not the planning commission.
The planning commission could say in their recommendation that they.
Yeah.
Recommend limiting the uses to, for instance, professional and administrative offices on the first floor of that building, or if they don't want to limit it to just the first floor, then the.
Conversely, could we, we could, as a body, say we, it's not a proffer, but our recommendation, our recommendation would be conditioned on the uses being as described in the meeting as opposed to it coming from them, right? I mean, we can, we can provide whatever recommendations, ultimately, it's going to city council, one way or the other, we could vote zero-nine, it's still going to city council, so.
Yeah, and city council could, yeah, even at zero-nine, they could.
Right.
Still do it.
Right.
So your recommendation could be whatever you wanted it to be, as broad as you wanted it to be, or as limited as you wanted it to be, and then city council can.
Accept.
Modify it if they choose.
So do we, do we have any more questions on, on eighty-five?
I, I did want to reiterate what Mr. Chapman said, that this particular property, eighty-five and seventy-five, will be resurveyed into a single lot, as will sixty-five and fifty-five when we discuss, yeah, but that, I'm not sure that was brought out, or, but it will be.
Seventy-five is already mixed use, right?
Yes.
To resurvey those into one lot, they would have to be the same zoning.
Assuming that the zoning goes forward, yeah, it would be resurveyed into a single lot, yes.
That's true, very good point.
I just wanted to emphasize that, I'm not sure, he mentioned it, but I'm not sure, we all heard that, but.
All right. If there are no further questions, I would entertain a motion, and if the movement wants to make recommendations, we could vote on that as well.
I would make a motion to approve RZ two-three oh-nine oh-two with the conditions that they set forth tonight of uses of the property, being as the school and mental health services on the first floor.
I second that.
I'm sorry, who seconded it?
I did.
Mr. Espinto.
I'm not here to do it, all right. Thank you, hold it. All right. Ms. Wilcott. Mr. Harwell.
No.
Mr. Espinto.
Yes.
Mr. Armstead.
Yes.
Mr. Henninger.
Yes.
Ms. Andress.
Yes.
Mr. Gulas.
Abstain.
Mr. Broadhead.
Yes.
And Mr. Roberts.
Yes, so that case will go forward to city council with a seven-one, seven-one affirmative recommendation with one abstention. All right, so I guess we'll then go back and start on case oh-two, which is, oh-one, rather, not, oh-nine, oh-three, oh-one, the fifty-five, sixty-five Bagby.
So fifty-five, sixty-five Bagby, the request here, again, is to move to a mixed use zoning from its current, current C-five zoning, I believe. And again, as I mentioned before, I think we should spend some time discussing what exactly is going to go on into the renovated and repurposed structure. We are proposing for this to be a multitude of uses, both residential, office as well, certainly, medical deliverable as well. Gray Plosser, who is here with me tonight from KPS Architects, who's been our project architect of record on multiple projects now, we're, we're very pleased to have him on this one, and he can walk us through the site plan and talk about the various components to be delivered to the site. Generally speaking, however, the, the intended use under the roof here is that this would be a residential component, a for-rent apartment, a multifamily project, but there are limitations on who those potential residents could be. Those would have to be persons who are in the intellectual and developmental disability community, but that are highly functioning. So that's the targeted user base relative to persons in the intellectual and developmental disabilities world. Additionally, it would, residency would be allowed to those fifty-five and up who are in the LGBTQ-affirming community. There are multiple instances of this type housing deliverable across the country, but they're still very limited. You know, in the research we've done, there are less than two dozen projects like this across the country that creates this amazing ecosystem for two communities who have been marginalized for their entire lives and who really are seeking this social outlet, this ability to live independently, but yet also have social services that kind of surround them, and the ability to participate in community events. Like I mentioned before, you know, our firm operates in a couple of states, and we, we operate quite a few apartment projects, typically those are conventional market rate projects. And over the years that we've been in business now, which is, which is quite a few years old as I'm getting, but I can't tell you the number of caregivers, whether those are moms or dads, or brothers, sisters, cousins, grandmothers, whoever they would be, who have a loved one who has been diagnosed with an intellectual and developmental disability, and who is highly functioning. You know, these are folks who are working at the grocery store, who, who have jobs or have the ability to take care of themselves. or have the ability to take care of themselves, but yet they want this independent source of living. They want the ability to have somewhere to call their own. And for the caregivers, it's a very important thing, and as we've seen the caregiving community age, there's even more concern about, you know, where those persons with diagnosis of an intellectual and developmental disability would go in a community that would be supportive and inclusive, and really allow them to flourish and foster. And that's really what this is all about, is the combination of those two groups that are really seeking the same thing, but yet that are very different, and then creating this ecosystem for them to flourish. And for us to do that, also contained under roof, would be a large portion of one of the buildings would house Triumph Services, which is a local group, again, run by Beth Zients, who is here tonight, and I'm going to ask her to join us at the podium in just a minute to explain the work that they're doing. But through all of the work that they're doing, for them to be able to house, be housed under roof with the participants, will create amazing results. And then Karen Musgrove, who was just at the podium before on the previous case, and again, as I mentioned, she's CEO of Birmingham AIDS Outreach, they also operate Magic City Wellness Center, that we're very fortunate to have been involved in the redevelopment of their space over on Fourth Avenue South. Karen's intention is to have mental health providers located in this facility as well, but also to have a satellite office of her Magic City Wellness Center that would not only provide the general medical deliverables that her group has done for a lot of years now, but that would also be able to provide geriatric-specific services, which, again, is something that those in the marginalized fifty-five and up LGBTQ-affirming community are seeking, and this would be a place to house that services as well. So we're thrilled about the deliverable here. It does take a lot to kind of get your head around what all we're proposing to go on there, and the limitations related there, too. Because we do think it's very important for folks to understand, this is not just another apartment community. It's very much not the case. So maybe before I get Karen and Beth to join at the podium to discuss the services that their groups would be providing under roof, I might ask Gray to speak to the site plan and the proposed redevelopment of the existing structures, the additional piece that will be added, and the moving away from a sea of asphalt that's existed now for multiple decades into something that's friendly and green and very accommodative.
I think that sounds good, right? Maybe you don't need me to do that. I'm Gray Plosser, KPS Group. I've, I've been doing this for fifty years, and I don't think I've ever run across somebody exactly like John, who's a man on a mission with respect to this stuff. And so, it's kind of exciting to be a part of it. The site plan, if it's, can be put up, I don't know that it can.
Brian, do you have the site plan for fifty-five, sixty-five Bagby?
I don't know specifically which one they wanted, so I'm gonna pull it back up, and they just need to tell me which screen.
Go to the last one.
The one with a lot of green on it.
Right. There you go, that's it. So, just like the previous case, this is two, in this case, two office buildings that are connected with a bridge, they were built many, many years ago, and have been abandoned for a long time. The objective, as John said, was to turn those into residential buildings. Interestingly, their configuration lends itself to that. And in order to satisfy the, the premise that he is trying to create a community, a piece has been added to it at the center between the two buildings, which is currently parking. And there's a common communal facility there that's shared by all the residents, and it provides a connection on grade between the two buildings. In addition to that, there is dedicated outdoor space that is secure for the residents, a dog park and other things. In general, the site plan has about, has doubled the amount of pervious ground as opposed to what's there now, it's almost a hundred percent paved or building. And so, going to residential allows us to reduce the parking requirements, and to open up the middle of the building to create a focus, if you will, that's a community focus. The buildings, the, the commercial part, the services that John was just referring to, are going to occur on the lower level of the southernmost building, on the far, your far right, and their entrance, which will, they'll have their own parking area back there, and, and their own entrance, so that those people there are, are not directly using the residential portions. Building is, transportation is an important issue for these folks, whether it's public transportation or private transportation. There's a large drop-off and pickup area that's going to be associated with the community building up front. There's a bus stop on the site, and both of those are important from an access standpoint for these folks. I think the, the, you know, they are what they are, we'll, we'll make them look decent. It's sort of the silk purse out of the sow's ear, a kind of exercise for us. But the important thing is, is the purpose, and how we provide for community space within the building. So there'll be communal space on each floor in the residential areas, plus a central community, community space. There'll be indoor and outdoor spaces, there's a, there's a dog park. The, the, there's a, there's about, the, the new construction is a relatively small amount. It only accounts for about eight percent of the total construction value, or square footage. So, you know, why mixed use? Again, it's, it's the combination, what, what I think is happening here, as you can see it unfolding, is from a colonel that started it, which was the school, is a progression of ideas about how to add back to this site. And it's a very specialized kind of people. You've already zoned one parcel mixed use. The city's long-range land use plan called for this area to be mixed use. We actually did that plan back about two thousand and eight, I think that's right, I'm not sure, but somewhere back there. But there was a good reason for it, it needed to have a catalyst that would be flexible enough to attract people. And that's why I think, to me, the mixed use makes more sense. And if so, it would mean that all of those parcels that are contiguous would be mixed used, and could, and with the intent of which is to resurvey them into a, into a single parcel. So, I probably said more than I should, I think that it's, that it's really a unique thing, in my view, and an opportunity for something that's very special for Homewood, and very special for the folks who are likely to be there.
That's true, I mean, again, I can't reiterate enough how unique this project would be, both for the local area, for our region, and really for the nation, because like I mentioned, there's only a couple dozen of these projects located across the country. And really, in our research, I don't know if there's anything quite like what we're proposing that would allow us to bring in the geriatric services as well. And I will push back a little bit on something Gray said, which he, you know, is, I love to do all the time, is that this will be beyond just repurposing the existing buildings. Our intention here is to make these quite attractive and beautiful buildings. Because, again, the, the users here are special, okay? I mean, these, again, these folks who, again, have been marginalized their entire lives, and, and are really seeking this type of residential deliverable, deserve something very nice. And that certainly is what we intend to deliver here, and it's going to be very attractive and good-looking. And we're very thrilled to have operational partners like Karen and Beth on board as well. So maybe Karen, since you're here and you want to speak.
Yeah, I'll just speak fairly quickly, so we, like they said, we will have our medical providers specifically in the space, so that's why it has to be medical, to do the geriatrics, which will be open to the entire community, not just the individuals who live inside of this space, more mental health workers, and, you know, just thinking about what this could become. We'll have mentors from this space, working with the kiddos at the school, and just the learning opportunities to go back and forth for multi-generations to, to be together, I think it's really special. The kids are tired of staring at these really beautiful buildings, so we're thrilled that something magical is going to happen at the top of this hill that they can watch and be a part of, and they can benefit from as well. So, so again, it's my agency coming in, not only looking at education from a, this is you sit in a classroom all day, but an education of the people living next door, and how they could be integrated into how you learn, and what special things could be a part of that, gardens and green spaces, it's endless, the opportunities are endless, so that's, that's why we're excited about it.
Beth Zients with Triumph Services, I'm going to sign a little sheet here. The part that we would play in this is what we do within the community and the city of the greater area of Birmingham every day. We serve the individuals with developmental and intellectual disabilities to help them live independently. As John said, we work with a, a small subset of that population that can live independently. Most all of them work, take care of their own chores, a lot of them currently already live on their own. So, again, I'm speaking really for us providing the services that we do within the community anyways. Just what it would allow is us to be able to serve a greater number of people in the community, because obviously it would be more cost-effective, we could offer more services, and it would just make the services available to those individuals that would live there. Those, of course, with the ID and DD diagnosis.
Could you speak to the services that you do provide?
Sure, sure. Yes, sure. We work off of a holistic approach at Triumph Services, so what we look at is, we look at the work, the play, the social life, counseling, and life coaching. So with the work piece, most all of our referrals for that come through the Alabama Department of Rehab Services, which happens to be a stone's throw from these buildings, they're right there on Goodwin, just catty corner. So that's, we are over in that area a lot anyways, our participants are very familiar with that area because they go see their ADRS counselors. So with that, we help them get employed, and we provide support throughout the duration of their jobs. That's supported employment, and it has to be competitive employment. So the individuals we work with have to be able to be competitively employed. And what the state defines and the nation defines as competitively employed is they have to be able to apply for and get a job that a neurotypical individual can get with reasonable accommodations. So we don't, we can't go to a business and carve out a job that doesn't already exist, that is not competitive employment. So the state and the federal government will not allow us to consider that a competitive employment. We also offer life coaching, we do everything from daily life coaching with some individuals to monthly, to really once a quarter, that would be anything that the family feels that we need to check in on. You know, do we check in to see if their apartments or their houses are clean? We help take them to doctor's appointments, just kind of do the things that you and I can do on our own, but they might need just a little bit of assistance in doing that. What we try to do is allow the families to remain being families while we kind of pick up the pieces that differ these individuals from others in the community. We have a social program that is community-based, all of our services are community-based. We don't do any services that are not community-based. So we would be going into these individual apartments and helping them with life coaching in those individual units, just like we would throughout the city. And then we also offer some counseling that's very specific for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. So that's, those are the services that we currently provide.
Don't you be relocating your, don't you currently have offices on the south side of Birmingham?
We do, we...
Have you relocated here, or are you maintaining that one?
I think we would maintain both, probably. To, we would maintain both, is what I'm thinking, because we have a population that we serve that's within walking distance to our south side. We would just basically keep doing what we're doing, but we would have a concentrated pool of people that, you know, might or might not want our services. Again, it's, it's a total, it would be up to the individuals living in that community that have the intellectual and developmental disabilities, whether they would need our services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further on this case before we open it up? As we did before, we'd, we'll probably have questions, but we want to...
I'm sorry, there'll be plenty of questions, so, yeah, we'll just stand back to answer those.
Okay, thank you, with that said, we'll open up the public portion of this hearing. If you're here to speak on this case, you have comments or questions, this will be your time to come forward and ask those, or make those comments.
I'm Jo Echols at three zero eight English Circle. Let me sign in real quick so I won't forget. First of all, I'd like to comment that I think this is a fabulous presentation on the program. I think over there on Bagby Drive, I think anything that could be improvement is certainly welcomed by the city. I think, having said that, and there is a couple of things I would like for the, the committee to, to really think about before you vote on this, if you're going to vote on it tonight. So we're talking about residential apartments, and I definitely think individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities needs this. We have certain community homes in Homewood, and they are very accepted into the community, from the pig to downtown. But there is a question I have about, besides the individuals with the intellectual disabilities, which I think this is a great project that needs to be done, is the additional housing for LGBTQ-plus seniors. And the reason I ask y'all to think about that is with your presentation, it was a marginalized people in this community, or that there has been a study done. I, I'm very curious about that, I mean, what study has been done that they've been discriminated with residential? I don't want the city to be subject to anything that might be discriminatory. I, I just have a problem with that, I, I can't, I have never known that anyone in this community has been rejected in Homewood from any kind of residential building. So why do we put it in here with this wonderful other project? So I would like for y'all to, to think about that and to ask more questions, because I, I'd like to know exactly why are we saying they're marginalized besides that they're different? If they're different, that's one thing, but marginalized is a whole different thing. So I would ask for you to really consider that before you grant this, or that you send it to the city council. And I thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else speak on this case before we close the public portion? All right, again, seeing no one, we will, I'm sorry.
I have to write my name.
Yes, ma'am, I, I don't care if Mr. Goodwin would, would have a problem.
We'll worry about my address later, okay? Hey, I'm Tricia Kirk, and I'm retired and just now, you know, having a great time. However, when I got the phone call about this months and months and months ago, I went, wow, this might have been magic. I've been working with people that, I call them special needs, so I've been working with them for long enough that that's what we said, for 45-plus years. And when these little children, you know, were this big, and Down Syndrome autism, which we didn't even have autism back then, the mothers would come in and say, is my child ever going to have a friend? And I would say, yes, we will figure it out. Remember, it was not inclusion back then. It was where we would just take these children to the lunchroom and back, and then we would play with them on the playground and back, self-contained. And that was the mother's main worry. Well, because we also thought all these people that were mentally challenged were going to die in their 40s. Well, or really, we said 20s, 30s, then it got to be 40s. Well, now it's a typical life, you know? Someone with Down Syndrome can live as long as the rest of us. So then the next question, continuing to work with this population and their parents, they said, where is my child going to live? What is going to happen as they get old? What's going to happen when I die? Where are they going to live? I don't know the numbers of the State Department, how many of our people need housing, because it changes every single day. Because another parent dies, their siblings end up with these children who they love them dearly, but that is dagum hard. And so they're saying, what happens? And I don't know if y'all know Mildred Strong. I do know the Siclios, remember Mildred Strong? She was 90-something years old. She had one son named Billy, and he had Down Syndrome. And she came to my office at 90-something years old. I did know her. I knew her from, since he was born. And I said, Ms. Strong, wow, how are you doing this? How are you still alive dri- I did say that. You know, I don't have a filter, Jennifer, so I really said it. And I went, you're still driving here and you're still doing this? And do you know what she said to me? She said, he has nowhere to go but me. He is an only child with distant cousins. Said, I will live one more day than he does. His funeral was up the street at John's Rides Out, and honest to goodness, I promise y'all, she died three weeks later. At his funeral, I looked at her, I said, well, Ms. Strong, she said, I did it, because I had nowhere for him to go or take care of him. My people are looking for friends, whoever the friends are. I hear what they're saying, the worries, but I think that it is, Homewood has proven that y'all include everybody. Look around. You know, you have everything from the Bell Center, the Exceptional Foundation, Lakeshore, and everything else in between. Y'all are the ones that will do it. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart for the last 45 years of all the people we served. Please help them find a place to live. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and we just want to make my address, you know?
Okay, any, oh.
My name is David Chaplin, and I live at 1002 Lancaster Road. And so I'm, I think, unique in this room in that I have a child with a disability who is exceptionally capable, but lives with us and doesn't really have the community of friends to live separately from us at this point. And so the kind of structure that's being proposed here is an incredible opportunity, I think, for people who fall into my class. The other thing that is unusual about me is that I have a sister who's dead and who has a spouse. Now, she had a chance to live in Alabama, and she didn't feel like she could live here because of the things, the kind of discrimination that she would have felt. I don't know that there are any studies that have been done in Alabama to quantify this, the extent of this, but I know that there is a real feeling in the community that there is discrimination against LGBTQ individuals. And so I would just ask that we recognize this and offer the same kind of support to those individuals as we would for the people who maybe are more lovable in some ways for many of us, like my son with Down Syndrome. And I'm really pleased that this community is considering putting together this kind of a property. I think it'll be fantastic.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else like to speak on this case? All right, not seeing anyone else, we'll close the public portion and come back up and answer questions from the commission, please.
So again, I'll start with a comment that we recently, right before you took ownership or at some point, we condemned 5565, or we declared a public nuisance because it is in such awful shape. And again, I want to point out, these buildings are very unloved and very empty and very full of concrete and asphalt. And so again, any improvement over in that area is just a blessing for the city and a good thing. I did want to ask, if you wouldn't mind, John, sharing what the makeup of each of the buildings would be, if you have numbers to share, if you have unit numbers to share.
Sure. The, the project would contain a total of 169 individual units. I want to say the split on that is roughly 20 of those would be two-bedroom units, and everything else would be a studio or one-bedroom. The vast majority of our proposed population here are individual, sole occupants. In the 55 and up community, at certain times, there are more than one individual. And so we want to make sure we accommodate for that. And there are some individuals who just want more space. They have more stuff. But again, by and large, the, the project is outside of those 20 units, all studio and one-bedroom units. Most of our prospective residents would, would not drive typically. So there might be a question related to parking spaces. I believe we, we're hitting all the required marks, but, but we certainly feel like those are in surplus to what will actually be needed.
Outside of, I'm sorry. Outside of residents, we talked about some employees being staffed there. What, what does that look like as far as numbers? Do we have a plan?
We've been, I'm sorry, to interrupt. You can certainly speak to your proposed full-time employee or full-time employee equivalents. As far as square footage, I know in the central building, it's, it's roughly 4,000 square feet. Karen's Wellness Center is proposed to take just over half of that. So Karen could speak to the number of providers she might have there.
Yeah, so it would probably be like a receptionist person, of course, there, some mental health people, but I believe the mental health people, maybe two or three offices because they can go back and forth, and also too, we have telehealth, which is good. And then two certified nurse practitioners who move, you know, who are there full-time and overseen by an MD at the Wellness Center, which is on 32nd. So, so a fully functioning doctor's office.
And then from Triumph's standpoint, I, I mean, I, I would have to think through that. But right now, we currently only have nine employees. I mean, we're a small nonprofit. You know, I would say probably no more than three or four staff would be there. We obviously would probably locate our employment team there because ADRS is right there. So it would make logical sense that anyone that we're working with ADRS for employment, that that team of mine would work there. Again, we're not changing what we do. This would just consolidate the amount of services we could provide to the community and to, you know, a location. So it would all depend on the demand for our services. A lot of the participants that would qualify for this housing from the intellectual and developmental disability side might not need any of our services. And their services kind of ebb and flow. So we have some people that we'll see weekly for a time right after the death of a family member, to then maybe six months later, we're checking in on them once a month. So it would just really depend, but I don't, it would not exceed, I would not, not say five people. You know, even if we moved our whole office at one point, it's like 10, so.
These are business hours, right?
I'm sorry, what?
Business hours for?
Oh, yes. Yeah, we're busi-, we are business hours. We are not an emergency. We are not on-call. We don't handle medications. We don't handle emergencies. We are not a crisis kind of nonprofit. We literally work between eight and five. And, I mean, that, that's our hour, so.
In terms of the pop, sorry, go ahead.
Well, I would just say, in fairness to that, I mean, this would allow Beth Group lots of expansion opportunities. So I, I think she might sell herself short as to the potential growth that might occur under Ruth there. But then also, you know, we would, we would house, you know, a traditional leasing office, management office, things of that for purposes of management of the structures. In addition, there, there would be a very robust and extensive resident events and kind of community engagement operation that would go on. So at certain times, you know, we would be bringing in, you know, whether it's food trucks, or whether it's, you know, yoga, or whether it's all these different things that, that a traditional Class A apartment community would provide. We intend to provide those to these residents. So again, our intended deliverable here is truly a Class A feel, but yet that's very quietly delivering universalist design that speaks to those who, who do have some limitations. But again, I think it's important to note that our proposed resident population here are highly functioning. They certainly would, would have to check all of the boxes related to highly functioning criteria, and that this is not a group home. You know, there, there are fantastic group homes out there that specialize in round-the-clock services and those type things. That is not what this is. So there would not be full-time employees related to those type activities.
And we have, for us to serve individuals, I mean, we have admission and, and discharge criteria. So they have to meet that level of, of independence to be able to live independently.
Where, sorry, where would the, I mean, you said 169 units. I know you don't know who's going to live there until you open the place and people show up, but where are you drawing this population from? Is it the greater Birmingham area with this? I'm just trying to get at kind of what, what kind of net population change are we talking about?
I would think we would pull from the entire greater Birmingham area. The other thing that I think we could pull from are family members of people within the community as their loved one ages or as their family ages. A lot of individuals with developmental disabilities don't come here, even though that's where their loved ones are, because there's not, there are not housing options that they feel like are in the best interest. Right now, the only option that a lot of our participants have, even, you know, when they're in their 20s, 30s, 40s, would be to go to a assisted living or nursing home facility, which you can imagine, they don't, they're not interested in doing. So when they do try to relocate loved ones, they end up not coming here, which puts a strain on the family. So I think it would be within the community, but also loved ones of families within the community.
Yeah, and ours, I think, just from, from the greater Birmingham city area, Jefferson County area, we're just really looking for individuals who don't have family members, who don't have loved ones. They just don't have a community. We learned during COVID that this really is a very, a marginalized community that has a lot of needs as far as just being around other people. And so that's kind of what we're trying to meet as well. So they did this in, in Texas, and I think there's like a 10-year waiting list for this particular complex that they built. So they should have built it, they said, like 100 times bigger. So there is a need out there. It's just a very hidden need. And I think once we open the doors, we're going to find that it's just something that just explodes. To create this beautiful space with all these different opportunities, medical, mental health, just having somewhere to go play checkers or bridge with, other people, I think is going to be something that people are very positive upon, so.
I'm just going to speak also as a mother. I have two children with disabilities. One of them recently went off to college, and I think what was very interesting and eye-opening as I'm working with this project is that my daughter made the comment, she's at Montevallo. They have a very high population of neurodiverse and, and just a varied amount of students and their lifestyles and everything. She, for the first time, said, it was so nice to know that there were so many people around her that were like her and that she could relate to, because being in a traditional environment with the majority of people being neurotypical, it was very overwhelming to her. So I think the thought that she could have something like she has in her dorm now, later in life, is very, very appealing to me. And I think that would be appealing to a lot of people, especially with the disabilities.
Market research that we've done indicates, for us at least, that, that the, the radius is going to be much greater than the Birmingham area. Karen pointed out the facility in Houston that opened a few years ago with the, you know, 10-year waiting list. Or another facility recently opened in, outside of Tampa, that again, was fully subscribed prior to its opening, and there's now a waiting list there as well, so.
About shape, correct, that these were all 55 and older, is that right?
No, not the entirety of the, not the entirety of the population. We're intending to service two populations, one being those with an IDD, intellectual and developmental disability, as well as those 55 and up.
The individuals that we serve that would fit this criteria are basically 18 and up. Well, it would be 19 and up really, because of contractual laws in Alabama. But 19 and up would be the population we serve that's, that are looking for housing.
The question I would have would be, limited staff, correct, at the facility? And mostly during business hours, correct?
Again, I think it-
Well, well, the question that I have is, would a lot of these individuals, would this be their first time living alone? And the reason I'm asking, because have you all done any kind of feasibility study or thought about the impact that these residences might have on emergency services of the city of Homewood during off-hours, at any other time when there's nobody there?
Certainly. And, and again, I don't know if I would categorize this as being lowly staffed. I would say it would be appropriately staffed. And certainly, the market will dictate staffing levels to some extent, right? I mean, folks aren't going to want to, to lease and rent and live here if it's inappropriately staffed. But I would also suggest that these folks, you know, aren't just nonexistent currently. They do live out there. They live in their caregiver's bedroom. They live in a basement. They live-
In the South Side.
In the South Side. They live, they live within the community. So to the extent there is current demand placed upon our first responders, it's out there now. I would suggest this might actually decrease it, because they will have this support system, this ecosystem, that maybe instead of calling 911, they can call Suzie next door, who they've become friends with for the first time ever.
Or the, or the, the medical facility on the first floor.
Right. Right. The other thing that I would say too is, looking at our population versus, you know, 19, I mean, especially with the younger ones, the 19 to 30-year-olds, they're gonna, they're gonna follow the rules most of the time. They're going to be very easy tenants compared to other individuals that might not have lived alone, or even, even have lived on their own, but now have an apartment to themselves. So, you know, I don't really think.
Yeah, we currently, we currently serve this population in various multifamily communities in lots of locations. And to Beth's point, these folks, again, are highly functioning. So this is not necessarily a physical disability that might, you know, where they might fall more, or it might require medical services on that.
Trust me, I've had a long-term employee from, from Triumph for many years at my restaurant. I, I get it. But it is, I mean, I know it's a, not a concern, but it's a legitimate question.
Certainly, certainly. Certainly, certainly.
So I think that's, goes back to some of my, my questions too. It's just, it's like the use I like. I'm just having, I'm still having struggles here a little bit of understanding how it helps us. You said before, these, these individuals, right?
Mm-hmm.
If you can staff it like your traditional apartment, this is a challenge.
I don't know if it would be staffed necessarily just like a traditional.
But the other side of it too is how do we make, with some use restriction in place, intended for these intended uses as opposed to just being an open, two-bedroom apartment?
And our interests are aligned on that front. We, we don't intend and we don't want to serve. And there will be, there will be folks who, who are not as highly functioning as they think they might be, who, who we're not a good fit for either.
So how do, how do we put some use restriction that allows that to work?
Yeah.
Dex, Dex, gives us comfort and also gives you comfort.
We're certainly, um, we're certainly open to, to language that crafts our ability to operate the project as intended, but also gives comfort.
If I was fifty-five, that was easy, it'll be easier.
Yeah.
And now you make it more confusing.
That's fine, I'm sorry.
Is there a percentage of the one sixty-nine that is, one hundred and sixty-nine units that is for ID and DD, and then?
There is, there is not, no.
And then you have diagnosis for ID, DD. How do you, how, how, what's the screening process to, on the fifty-five and older? Like, how are you determining that?
Well, I would suggest fifty-five and older is, is, is pretty simple.
Yeah, yeah, but you're saying fifty-five and older and LGBTQ plus?
Affirming. So I mean, you, you, you don't certainly, you don't have to be, um, you have to be supportive of the LGBTQ community. That's really the only thing.
We're just saying that it's a safe place, it's an affirming space, but it's not a requirement. And that recruitment will come-
That recruitment will come from, you know, the, the wellness center, from our current clientele and our services that we're providing, our mental health services. So we're really just looking for individuals who are seeking, or who might be lonely, or we know that need this kind of space, and so we're going to be actively recruiting within those that we serve, so. Just kind of like the school, it's LGBTQ affirming. You walk into the space, you're walking into an affirming space. But it's the fifty-five and older that we're really, that we're kind of focused on, especially with geriatric health and all the mental health needs within the community, so.
Would you say it's an even split as far as the populations go, or do you know?
I don't, you know, I, I think, I think it's going to be really interesting to see when we actually make this public, kind of what the need presents itself, and I think that's kind of where we are, is that we're, uh, we're collaborating. We're coming together in a partnership to meet the needs of the community, and, and the needs of the community today might be completely different in two years or when an opening comes up. They're also not the same needs that were before COVID, that are now after COVID. So things, I think that it's just very flexible in that conversation, but we're committed to a partnership in serving the people that we serve, so.
You mentioned the medical facility there on site. What kind of services will they offer?
So it's just, just think about your general doctor's office. So we already have one on, uh, the Magic City Wellness Center. Uh, so we're just going to expand our wellness center. So that is just, you just walk into the doctor for just general health. "I don't feel good. I have COVID. I have the flu," you know, yearly checkups, and, uh, it's just general practitioners, uh, nurse practitioners and MDs on staff. And then, of course, mental health providers as well. So no, uh, no pharmacy or anything like that.
Can I just add the curiosity question, practical question? Is there cafeteria that will provide food? How would these residents be able to go out and secure their food at night or dinner, lunch? You know, how's, how's that going to work?
Certainly, this, this, you know, and not to say there won't be special events where, where there'll be catering activities and food trucks and things of that nature, but on the average typical day-to-day, food services is not something that would be provided in this facility.
So if, if a parent had a child there, it'd be their responsibility to get food to him or take him out or her out to get lunch or dinner or whatever.
Karen?
Yeah, so then that's another example of some really great opportunities for additional collaboration and opportunities, is that we have the cafeteria right next door, so, at the school. So do we open, keep this cafeteria open after five and it becomes where you go and have dinner? And so then the kids from school who have to stay late have dinner, parents come in, um, people who live in this complex. So I think there's some space there as well, because it's a fully functioning cafeteria, so opportunities.
And in terms of security at night, will the facility be locked or the parents or whoever have access?
It'll be access control twenty-four-seven. You know, s- security and the feeling of safety is something that is paramount with this intended user base. So Gray's team is integrating full access controls, the whole perimeter and buildings twenty-four-seven. There will be additional security patrols, um, throughout the buildings all, all night.
And lastly, I guess the rent rate, is this sort of like mark, how, how's that working? Market rent rate?
This will be market rate, okay? It will be naturally affordable, market rate, community.
Okay. Just curious.
Karen, for, to your third-party security or after-hour security question, I just think it is worth noting that Karen and the school at seventy-five Bagby have utilized third-party security services since the day they opened. So this would be an extension of, of the third-party services that are already occurring on the street.
There's nothing further from the, uh, from the commission? I would entertain a motion to approve.
I will make a motion with the conditions that Mr. Chapman put forward as far as usage, uh, within the mixed-use zoning to approve RZ two-three oh-nine oh-one.
I'll second that.
All right. Mr. Broadhead?
Yes.
Mr. Goulas?
Upstain.
Ms. Andres?
Yes.
Mr. Henninger?
Yes.
Mr. Armstead?
Yes.
Mr. Respinto?
Yes.
Mr. Harwell?
Yes.
Ms. Wilcutt?
Yes.
And Mr. Roberts?
Yes. So your case will go forward to the city council with an eight-zero affirmative vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, now that we've got the short cases out of the way-
No, I was just, I was just apologizing to Brandon about that. I'm sorry. That was, I did that. I, I did not know. I'm sorry. That was me that did that.
Okay, we'll, um, call now, um, old business. Uh, there are two related cases. Uh, FD twenty-three oh-seven oh-one, uh, which is a final development plan, uh, at thirty-thirty Independence Drive, uh, and then several other contiguous addresses, uh, and then RZ twenty-three oh-seven oh-two, uh, which is a zoning request for nineteen oh-six Courtney Drive. Whoever is here to present the case, if you could come forward now, please.
I'm sorry, I'm Murray Legg, and I'm representing, excuse me, McConnell White and Terry, uh, who, who are the owners of the property. It appears that, um, what, what all this kind of boils down to is the location of the truck dock and the, and the compactor. It's kind of what the main issues are. Um, we have met, uh, now for over a year, trying to do our due diligence so we could come up with a plan that not only worked for, for the Piggly Wiggly folks, but also for the way that the traffic went through the site. And also, we met with neighbors, we met with the, uh, surrounding businesses, and we've listened to their concerns and have tried every way that we know how to try to incorporate this into something that makes everybody happy. Um, unfortunately, we hadn't been able to do that. What, what we've presented shows the truck docks, and I don't know if it's up on the, if it's up on the screen, but it shows the, if they can put the site plan up. Jess, it's not that one. There you go. All right. Down here, this is the south end of the Piggly Wiggly, and of course, the pig is right behind the CVS. And there have been folks who've asked, "Can we put it behind the building?" Well, as I said, we have worked hard to try to do that. It just won't fit back there. We've looked to put it on the north side. Well, what the north side does, it's right there by Cameron's Corners where, and, and so it's a very tight, narrow area, plus that is a main sewer line that runs through there. And because that the CVS will not leave their space and, you know, go to the corner, we've had to build the store, or not we have to, we proposed to build a store behind the CVS, and so we have to put the front door of the Piggly Wiggly on the northeast corner of the building. If not, it would be blocked by the CVS. So for us to put the truck dock on the north side, the trucks would be coming in, turning and going east, and then backing up right in front of the front door, which we don't feel like that's very safe and secure. Uh, we also are putting crosswalks in for the children, because that's another concern, is, is the safety. But the trucks will come off of Oxmore or off of thirty-one and go south, turn left on Courtney, and then back up into the truck dock. The, uh, with the compactor is all, it's like all eternal, internal loading, so there won't be anybody out there throwing in trash. You won't see any trash. It's, it's a big compactor. And if you could go to the, to the picture of the truck where it's backed in to the loading dock. All right, we'll, one more, I think. There you go. This is what, this will be the south side of the building, and this is what it will look like. And we have proposed to put a, a wall there, landscape the wall, the compactor is inside the wall, so you won't see that from, from Courtney. If you could go back to the, to the, uh, this is the back of the building, and that's what it will look like. And, and this will be the front, as you see that the entrance is right here on the, on the, uh, northeast corner of the building. We feel like by doing this design, it, it helps with, with knowing the traffic flow. We don't have trucks stacking out on Courtney at all. And Homewood, uh, has done their own study, and, and I believe you have an Apple study that's been going on with the traffic out on thirty-one. Our, we have proposed, and I'll let Daryl Skipper talk about that, we propose to, once the trucks, trucks back in and unload, they come out and they have to turn right onto thirty-one. They cannot sit at that intersection and try to go across, which is happening now. And we're not tr- trying to do anything that changes what has been done for a long time. The people, I mean, the trucks now at the Piggly Wiggly, back in, come out, come out to Courtney, turn left and go. So it's, and I know everybody's talking about the, um, you know, the trucks stacking and the number of trucks. Well, the store right now is only fourteen thousand five hundred square feet, which is very small for a grocery store. This store is twenty-five thousand six hundred. We will reduce the number of trucks that will be coming down Courtney, because now there's more storage inside the building, more freezer space inside the building, which we did not have in the fourteen thousand five hundred square foot building. But as I said, we've, we've worked on this for over a year in trying to meet as a team, and I think we've assembled a really good team. This is Jess Cirkin, and she's with Walter-Sowell Engineering. This is Daryl Skipper with Skipper Engineering, the traffic study. And this is Vic Fortenberry, uh, who's with Fortenberry Architects. And Vic is, he's just a flor of knowledge, because he's actually the Piggly Wiggly, um, I'm sorry, Vic, the architect for the Piggly Wiggly. And so he can speak to, if you have any questions about the Crestline Store, or any question about the Bluff Park Store, he can do that as well. But as I said, we have, we have tried very hard to listen, hear it, but it just, but for, for the truck stacking and our belief, the safety, and, um, and also for the operation of the store, it works better if the docks are on the south end. Could we make it work if we had to force it onto the north end? Piggly Wiggly wants to do whatever is best for the city of Homewood and also best for them. I think everybody here, excuse me, everybody here knows the, you know, you know, knows Andy Visiglai and his family. They've been here for years and years and years, and they love Homewood. And, and so I talked, Andy is not here today. He, he had to be out of town, but I talked to Andy before the meeting. And he just wanted me to stress that he understands the concerns. And if there was any way that we can make it work on the north side, he would do that in a heartbeat. And I know there's going to be some folks who are going to speak to that, but there are a lot of issues. Uh, there's, there's a drive-through coming out of Cameron's Corners that, that has to turn onto that, onto that, um, alleyway, I guess, behind the, uh, with the existing pig. And so, um, well, the sewer main is also one of the biggest issues that's happening. But I'm going to let Daryl Skipper come up here for just a second and speak to the traffic, because that seems to be a real important aspect of it.
Thank you, Murray. Yeah, my name is Daryl Skipper. I'm with Skipper Consulting, uh, thirty-six forty-four Van Road, Birmingham. And I can talk faster than I can write. Now, this is a extremely compact site, and what you've got here is the, um, Piggly Wiggly currently exists. Murray says it's about fourteen thousand square feet. That's about one good-sized Dollar General. That's what Dollar General is, about fourteen thousand square feet. A family dollar is about fourteen thousand. Uh, the goods and services that Piggly Wiggly sells, they want to have a better selection for their customers, which are primarily, uh, Homewood residents. You know, basically, everybody that's going there is from Homewood, because, you know, right across two-eighty, there's another one not too far from us, uh, over on the other side. Uh, Lane Park, uh, is not too far away. In looking at something like this, where we've got, I, I call it a, a village that's surrounded by a, a lot of houses. Y'all are, um, y'all been here a long time. City of Homewood has, City of Mountain Brook's been here a long time. We have the villages and the homes in both of those. And some of the most desirable places in any of these is as close to these downtown areas, these village areas, as they can get because of the convenience. It's very convenient to live there. I think there were just four houses that were built on Firefighter, just, they look like they're brand-new. I think they're that well-kept, and they have driveways on the, on the back on Courtney. Uh, you know, those are quite in, uh, sizable investments nestled up against, uh, Courtney right there on Firefighter. It is a very desirable location, because it is convenient. If you want to, you can walk to the grocery store, you can walk to the drugstore, you can walk to schools, you can walk to the downtown area. There's a lot you can do. It's very desirable. But that convenience doesn't come without a cost. There is a cost to doing that. And when you live in an area, uh, like downtown, downtown Homewood, and you've got some very heavy arterial roadways adjacent to you, Highway thirty-one. I don't have to tell you all about Highway thirty-one. I worked on it for years and years and years in this area. It takes, and it carries an enormous amount of traffic. Generally, northbound in the morning, outbound in the afternoon. Oxmore Road serves all the way to, to the interstate to the west and beyond. It goes on across the Hollywood Boulevard, over Highway two-eighty and serves Mountain Brook, so they are very heavy arterials. All of you will agree, both thirty-one and probably Oxmore Road are over capacity right now. They got more traffic than they were designed to handle. And one of the symptoms of that is traffic cutting through neighborhoods. They're hunting. You know, all of you probably do just like me. When I'm over in the area, uh, I'll apologize to the Mayfair residents. I do cut down Mayfair, go down, uh, to Roxbury, and go back over to the downtown area. I will assure them, though, that I'm driving the posted speed limit. I'm not driving too fast when I go there. And they can come drive on the street I live on, out in Trustville, just as long as they don't go faster. Now, in studying something like this, this is a little bit unique, and you just can't go to the national manuals and things like that and say, "Okay, this is a, an A-one-three, and it'll do this if you expand it." So what we did is we actually used, uh, drones to observe the whole area, and actually had people sit down at the drone and kind of figure out who was coming to the shopping center, and who was going away and when they were doing that, and which street are they coming from. Uh, but this particular, uh, retail site here, this commercial site, has a fair amount of traffic cutting through it also, just like the neighborhoods. It has a fair amount of traffic that is going, uh, using the parking lots beside- It has a fair amount of traffic that is going, using the parking lots beside the pig as a carpool marshaling area for the school across the street. Not a problem, is when schools taking in in the morning, picking up in the afternoon, there's ample parking in the lot that it doesn't present any problems with this, there's not a problem with that. But what we found in looking at that was exactly what we thought it would be and trying to use that as a basis for forecasting how much more traffic, if you add this much more square foot to it, would be generated. So that's what we've tried to do, is be as accurate as we can. Today, the folks that are most concerned, if I lived out in this area, would be how much traffic is going to and from Courtney and going to all the residential areas, back to the west and the southwest of Highway 31 here. Would I get on, if I'm going to the grocery store, would I get on, or the drugstore, would I get on Highway 31 or Oxmoor? If I lived back in that area, or would I, would I use the neighborhood streets to come that way? It's a mixed bag. Most of the people that are coming to this site to shop or whatever they're going to do are generally doing it for Highway 31 and from Oxmoor Road. They're coming that way because there's no real restrictions on them. If you're on Oxmoor Road and you come from the west, you just turn right in. If you're on 31, you're going south, you turn right in. If you're going 31 headed north, we do have some left turns, you can turn left in, so there's no restriction. Going back to the west is a difference, or southwest is a, is a big difference there. You can't turn left out on Oxmoor Road, so if you're coming from Oxmoor Road, you can't go back that way. Also, if you're going from, coming from the north, coming in, if you're trying to return, it's tough to try to cross Highway 31 through those little breaks in the median that are out there. So you're getting more people leaving this site, going down Courtney, leaving the site, going through the residential area, going to signals over at Firefighter at Oxmoor or either Roxbury at 18th and Oxmoor is what they're trying to do. We use that in trying to forecast how much traffic. Today on Courtney in particular, right now, coming to the site in the afternoon peak hour, one hour, is when the peak traffic for this shopping center exists and also the adjacent streets, that's when the peak traffic is out there. Coming to the site from Courtney, I've got eight vehicles from the firefighter Huntington Road area down there, up Courtney to the shopping center. Conversely, during that same hour going back that way, I've got thirty-nine vehicles, which is what we expected to find since you can't get back on Oxmoor. So what do we expect when the store is built? You've got additional square footage out there. In the, coming toward it, we're adding about fifty percent more square footage in the old, whole development. We've got about thirty-four thousand square feet, now we'll go to fifty-two, which is about a little over seventy thousand square feet. About fifty percent as much as you've got today. As it turns out, that's about how much traffic we think you'll generate, about fifty percent more. So the Courtney Drive is going to get another four cars coming toward it in the morning. The converse of that though is when people are leaving the shopping center and cutting through. We might have thirty-nine today, but we'll add another twenty down the road. Now, the truck issue, and those are the traffic numbers, I didn't hide anything from you, that's honest to God, firsthand look at that. Truck traffic, the way trucks, these shop stores work, and a lot of the big manufacturers now, like car manufacturers and things like that, they, they have all these suppliers that are outside, and when they need a widget or a whacko or whatever it does, they have to have it delivered right then, they use it. They don't store all that stuff on site, just enough to man the assembly line and get it going. Grocery stores are the same way. They don't have any storage, they have very limited storage, very limited freezer space, so they just have to have trucks recurring, coming back, replenishing, replenishing what little storage area they've got. With the largest storage area and a larger floor area, they can carry more inventory, they can bring it in the tractor, an occasional tractor trailer and stock it and not have to come back until that stock is gone. So as far as the number of trucks, we're trying to keep it at the same level, if we can, no more than that. One of the things we're adding is there is a, we did do observations of the pedestrians in the area, we do have some pedestrians coming up Courtney, primarily there's an apartment, a couple of apartments complex there. We do see some parents escorting some kids through the retail over to the tunnel and then over to the school, and we have that reverse in the afternoon. We also have, we counted the day we did it, in the afternoon peak hour, when school is picking up, we had sixteen parents drive over from the Courtney area up, park in the parking lot, go get their kid, bring them back and then return in that direction. So that can still accommodate. All in all, we think that the roadway system that we've got out there is adequate for the situation we've got, we think will be adequate in the future. Now, if I live on one of these residential streets, I probably don't want another car out there. You got, you live adjacent to this in the downtown area, you're going to have cut through, it's going to be there in the future. We think it's sustainable. The city is, in addressing a lot of the cut through, has a lot of multi-way stops in this immediate area right here, to slow the traffic down, to calm it more or less. So from that perspective, we think that we have the capacity to accommodate it and we think the impact is going to be minimal at best.
I knocked off the thing. Let me say, I'd like to have Vic come up and speak to the operational, the way the, the way all the trucks are going to be coming into the site.
Victor Fortenberry, Fortenberry Associates Architects. We've been working with the folks who build and own and lease the Piggly Wiggly for some time now. This particular store had the unique feature of having very little opportunity to expand where they are now and keep the parking where it needed to be, to the side and to the front. We found that we have a drugstore out there that was in no hurry to leave, and they've got a pretty good lease, I think, that's going to go on for quite a while. So the bottom line was, we have to identify the Piggly Wiggly, if we're going to put that where we did, and that seemed to be the only logical place on the site to place it. We had to put that in such a way that the entrance and the name and the signage was clear and not hidden behind another merchant, in this case CBS. So we made it a little taller, we made it a little bigger, a little more pretty, if you will, but that's to be seen from 31. Now, Piggly Wiggly is a destination. After a very short period of time, everybody in town is going to know where Piggly Wiggly is, so we don't have to identify Piggly Wiggly to everybody every day. But, you know, good business really dictates otherwise, you need to advertise your wares. So that's why we've located the entrance the way we did. If you'd like to show the front elevation here, that would make it pretty clear as to what we're doing. We can get that up.
Hey, Brian, Brian, can you show the front elevation?
We have a color rendering of that elevation, that probably means a little more to us.
The color drawing.
That's it in black and white. Let's keep going, here we go. You can see the end of the taller portion of the building is just about to coincide, if you look straight on from CVS, where the CVS store would be. It's attractive, I think, all the way through, however, you don't have the emphasis that we tried to attain by putting the entrance where we did and try to raise it up a little bit as well, adding to the feature of the store. A lot has been said about what happens when you have, you know, trucking in and out of the store. I've worked on several, it's always the same. Sometime we have more land to work with, we have ability to come in straight, back up and go back in, all manner of ways to turn a truck. We didn't have that here, we're dealing with what we have. And I think what we've come up with is a really pretty good way. We went out to the side early one morning with the typical delivery trucks. As a matter of fact, he was delivering goods to the old store when we went out, it was the largest truck they had. And we asked that driver to make the turn and let's come down what used to be Drake Street, or is now, but will be changed into part of our parking lot, go straight down Drake Street and turn left on Courtney and go out to 31 and go. He didn't have to stop, slow down or back up, he went easy, right around, made the turn and went. Our approach is similar but a little bit different. We want the truck to be able to come up so he can negotiate to the dock, make the turn onto Courtney and immediately back the truck into the dock. We estimated about maybe thirty seconds that that could be done after shifting gears and going in reverse because it's straight back. And when he leaves, it's straight to 31, you hardly turn at all, it's just a straight shot to 31. While the truck is in the store loading the goods, we built a twelve-foot high wall, at some cost I might add, and landscaped it just to conceal all of the loading dock. Now, if you walk out in front of the truck and look down there, you'll see the loading dock. But just the passerby, the merchants that are on this side of the street, that's what they're going to see. Another feature that is important to the operator and to you two is going to be the compactor. All the trash in the store, there's a lot of it, you've got a lot of paper, a lot of cardboard, we all know that. That goes down a chute, a metal chute, metal chute, within the building into a compactor. It's ground up. And that, after a while, when it's full, there's a truck that comes and pulls it out and either empties that or brings a new one in. So that's all done internally from the store, so you don't have a chance to have the shreds of paper, the labels that came off the boxes, all of that stuff flying around outside. I realize that could be a concern, but by doing this internally, you reduce to a large degree, if not eliminate entirely, the idea of having a mess on your hands. So the idea of where to put the loading dock is not a small issue. The whole store is geared to go a certain way when you go into a store. How many stores have you gone in and it's entirely different from the produce, like immediately on the right usually, or the left, you can flip it, but it's on the end and it goes around and you work your way around the different departments. That's traditional, it's standard, it's what people are accustomed to. We've arranged for the walk-in cooler, the walk-in freezer on the rear of the building that serves the interior of the store quite well, and arranged for the compactor and the loading dock on the end, the food comes in and is immediately stored. In this particular design, we have additional storage space inside the building, allows you to store pallets of food, then you take it out into the store when it's needed. That means actually fewer trucks delivering than if you had almost no storage, which a lot of stores have very little storage. So this one is a better design. Fewer trucks, fewer delays, fewer mess. Our feeling is that this is where the loading dock belongs because it fits on the site when you can get into it, back into it, load and go. If you put it on the north, you're going to interrupt the parking, it appeared to me, as well as the operation of Cameron's Corner tenants, which the owner wants to maintain. So he's got to worry about keeping those tenants happy as well as not interrupting the parking in the middle of the site, having to stop and turn into the back of the building. Plus, there's no loading dock out there. Plus the fact you've got a sewer easement back there. And Jefferson County Sewer doesn't want your building in their sewer easements. So if those could be overcome, that would be at a great price. So I thank you for your attention.
I know we have a lot of folks here who are very interested in how this turns out and I certainly don't blame them. I'm a lifelong resident of Homewood myself. I was born and raised in Homewood. Well, I say lifelong, my mother has lived in the same house now for sixty-four years and she lives on Edgewood Boulevard. And so I was in the third graduating class of Homewood Hospital. And everybody in Homewood wants to see the pigs succeed. I certainly do. I've known the family for a long, long time and you don't find a nicer bunch of folks who, who want to do good by the, by the neighbors that they serve. But they also want to operate a store that, that flows the way it should be. And now, they will do everything they can to make amends if we can make it work. But right now, when we've looked at it, our owner of this is very concerned about Cameron's Corners. He's very concerned about how it's going to be so tight through there, how it will affect the parking in the very back of Cameron's Corners. There's a drive-through coming down which serves Hunter's Cleaners and they're going to have to get out. If we have a big truck back there, how is that going to hurt it? I've talked to, and I don't want to speak for them, I've talked to other people who were doing some different, different developments back there. They are, they are opposed to anything at the rear of the store or on the north side of the store. So as I said, we're, we, we can't make every single person happy. And we would like to, but we just can't do that. So we're asking, you know, for your consideration of, you know, this development plan. And as Vic said, we feel like it's the best one, that, that's over a year and a half of planning just to get to this, this meeting. And we kept putting the meeting off and trying to reach and meet more people, to try to talk to them, to try to come to a solution. And, you know, at first we thought maybe we could on the north side, but after exploring it more, it just doesn't work. And so that is why we've gone back to the original seminal plan. And we're just asking for your consideration and I appreciate it.
Thank you, this is a public hearing. Before I open it up to the public, I just want to remind everyone, if we could be respectful of everyone's time, I know we've taken up a lot of your evening already, and try to limit your comments to three minutes. Also, again, try to avoid as much repetition as possible. With that said, we'll entertain comments from the public.
Good evening, my name is Jaclyn Brown and I live on 5068 Janet Lane, and I guess Anyways, I'm a licensed massage therapist that works off of Courtney Drive, respite therapeutic massage. The office is home to several massage therapists in that area. And I just want to add for, you know, what you guys are considering as you're discerning all this is the change in the noise pollution. Obviously, the goal is to present a calm environment for clients. That can be difficult with the changes in traffic. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
What's the best way of doing that?
Submit, like how?
Just a, since I planned this picture. To be, put up on the board.
You got, you got my emails today?
I do, yep. Yep, and I'm going to take this. Mr. Chairman, you said you did this, right?
Yes.
Okay. I've got this, I'm going to send it to you. You know, we've got some pictures, you want me to pass it around or put up or?
I'm Slade Blackwell, longtime resident of Homewood, fifteen years. I've got a business in Homewood and I'm a real estate developer for over thirty years.
We've got a, while we're writing our name, we've got a poster board and then we want to briefly go through this, and I know you guys have definitely gone through this and
And I know you guys have definitely gone through this in committee meetings and then also your planning. But we're gonna put it up here so folks in the back can see it. And I might step to the side to see a little bit better. All right, great.
Brian, can you put the image, the PDF that I sent you earlier?
Yeah, let's, can we start with this one first?
Yep.
All right, let's stay with this one first. All right, so the biggest issue we have, guys, is with the traffic and the truck flow. We sent around some pictures. We got on-site ourselves and counted fourteen different trucks that came into the facility. Can help me with all the different trucks? We had Coca-Cola, we had Pepsi, Buffalo Rock.
Mike's Lemonade, Sweet Water, Blue.
Boarhead.
Blue Bell.
Oh, and then Piggly Wiggly trucks.
Yeah.
Water trucks.
Nabisco.
Beer trucks.
Mm-hmm.
So we had about fifteen trucks. So to say it's a few trucks is not really accurate. So our biggest concern is the traffic flow and how the trucks actually come in and on their proposed site. And before we jump in and show that, we will have to say that we have met with the developers over the last month. They say they've been here over a year trying to resolve this, but I think with the neighborhood people, which we are, it's only been a month. And we've probably met with them, I don't know, probably met four times, one or two times on-site?
Mm-hmm. I've met three times. And the first time we met was about a month ago with Mr. Murray after I initiated contact. They've never initiated contact with the neighbors.
So what we want to go through is the way the traffic works. And there's a lot of things that they didn't say that I just want to point out to make sure you understand. All right, so let's, everybody get oriented.
Highway thirty-one is at the top.
Okay.
This is the current CBS, and this is the proposed new Piggly Wiggly.
So as y'all know, this, don't laugh, we cut this out, we're old school. But this is the size of a truck, right? And if y'all know, if you ask the architect, he will tell you how big a truck is. It's seventy-three feet, thirteen-and-a-half feet tall. This ceiling's only eleven feet tall. It's eight feet wide.
Those, where those people are sitting?
Or nine feet wide. So just for example, Chairman, from right here to the chair in the back, all the way down to seventy-three feet. All the way to the back of that chair. So you're talking about a truck that's eight feet wide, thirteen-and-a-half feet tall. This is eleven. All the way back there, almost to the wall, two feet short of the wall. So you have, this is the size of that, per scale. Might be an inch or two short. Their proposal is for trucks to come in here, come to this area here, make this turn, and back up. Seems simple. Here's some big issues with it. When, I think the architect guy came up here and said that that truck did what I just showed you in a minute and a half. Well, first of all, he must run the stop sign. Second of all, the stop sign has been run over because it's damp. And third of all, on the original site plan they had, they had no parking right here. The reason being, to make this radius, you have to go into these parking spots and turn and go up this drive. Now, they added the parking spots back to make me code. So for them to have this truck come and make this turn, they're gonna have to have people flagging off all these parking before the trucks come. Then somebody's gonna have to run way up here, stop traffic from coming in, stop traffic from CBS coming out, stop traffic from this res, I mean, business and this business. Then, as the truck is turning all the way up here and sitting here, starting to back up, we thought we'd play this, which is kind of corny. Did you get, ring your phone? Back up for, you know, beeping sound. We're gonna play that, but you probably don't want to hear it. They're gonna have to back up over a public sidewalk. I mean, it's a crosswalk. Then they're gonna have to back up over eighty feet of sidewalk, public sidewalk. So you're gonna have a seventy-three-foot truck multiple times a day with a flag, flagger, running and getting people to move, marking off these, coming up all the way up here and then backing all the way down. Going over a public crosswalk and going over eighty feet of sidewalk. The engineer said they saw, took note, multiple kids walking and traffic along Courtney from over here going to the school to get back over here to the crosswalk. So that's our biggest concern, is how the truck flow works. You wanna add anything to that?
No, that's, I mean, I've been in my business here for almost thirty years, and there is tremendous, they said something about sixteen kids walking. Those days when it's really hot weather, there aren't as many people that walk, obviously. And so one of the most charming things of my street is that kids and dogs and strollers and siblings are walking their kids to school in the morning. And this becoming an alley for delivery instead of a road, you know, will probably interfere with that and the safety.
And then the last two things about this, the stacking is not very good. Because if you have two trucks, one truck's gotta sit here while this truck goes up here and backs in. Then this truck has to leave. Then this truck's gonna have to go. So stacking is a nightmare to hear. Another thing they're doing is taking all their internal traffic, right, which is now coming in here, however it's coming in, coming in to assist Piggly Wiggly. Now they're putting it all on Courtney Drive, on a public road. So now they're going, they're using the public land for their own issue. So with that, you want to throw out our other plan? You got anything else?
Yeah, I mean, we can also talk about the trucks. It was said that all the trucks are currently stopping here and coming this way. But the pictures that we have have probably ten photos that I sent to Mr. Smith that we can look at in a minute. But just so that you know, that's not true. We have pictures of trucks coming down here. The Pepsi truck uses the land closest to CBS. There are trucks going the other direction. There's a picture of the Coca-Cola truck coming here. So what this plan does is put all the traffic that is now, you know, coming and going in different directions and puts them all here to come right up here. And turning on to, even when the trucks turn south on thirty-one, they still move over the central line. And they sit there and they block CBS and they block anyone coming off of thirty-one because it's an odd angle to turn right. And so they have to swing really wide to make the turn. So while they're sitting waiting, you know, all these extra trucks are gonna be even blocking his business here, CBS, my business patients coming and going, the massage therapist patients coming and going.
That's a great point. So when these trucks come, they block both roads. And then trucks, cars turning in will have to stack on thirty-one because the trucks are in the way.
All right, you want to throw out the plan?
So we also fast around some pictures. So y'all can see all the trucks that are actually coming and going. They're mid-size, small-size, seventy-three feet down to forty feet, twenty feet. But there are a lot of different trucks.
Brian, can you put the PDF up that I sent you earlier?
So one of the ideas we had, this kind of, was to meet with the developer. And we've met with the Piggly Wiggly owner, Andy, multiple times. Extremely nice guy, very helpful, very cordial. And he said this plan actually works for him. He said this works for his design of his facility. It works for his backing in and unloading. There's nothing that, this plan does not accommodate him. And what it does, and two things I want to point out, I'm gonna kind of point up here. Do we have a corner?
We all have a corner.
Okay. It's one of the things that Mr. Murray said is up here in the top. You see, it's called one parking spot. I don't know if y'all can see that. But what we've done is added twelve at the bottom. And do you go scroll down a little bit? Yep. So we put twelve parking spots at the bottom, and we only got one removed up top. And I'd like to see, you know, the deputy fire chief, one of their comments was the fire trucks wouldn't be able to get around this building. But under code, I think you can get on both, all three sides of the building. And I would like for at least the council and some of the folks in the city to take a look at this plan and see if it works with the traffic flow. Because I would bet you, under this plan, the traffic flow is dramatically better. Because what happened is your eighteen little would come in, hook this way, and back in. Now they have three ways to get out. Go straight, go up north, we can name that road, or come back down on Courtney Drive.
So you're not putting all the, it's actually the same traffic on the same traffic pattern that is now? Add anything?
The Hunter's, just so you guys have a reference, I mean, it's the number four building. A little driveway between that is Hunter's Cleaners driveway. So the spot that's lost allows those people, the people who make that turn. Just so you, to be clear, because there was mention about Hunter's Cleaners.
And then lastly, I would propose that it would be a cheaper build for the owner simply because you not have to put up a retaining or a wall to hide the loading dock. Here, using an existing roadway, an existing easement to back over. And you're adding parking.
And we're also just, point of reference, we're not asking for them to move the compactor or to change any of the internal structure of the building. The only compromise we're asking for is the loading dock location. So the store function's just exactly the same way it does. You're not gonna be walking into the meat department. You're gonna walk into the produce, however they want that to work.
Yeah, this is the exact same floor plate of site plan that they have, and we're just proposing to move the dumpster, I mean, sorry, the loading dock to the north side. So our request to you guys to just be, have a carry this over to next month to see if we can work this out with the developer. Because they have told us that they want to work with this, they want to help, but they have not changed their site plan one time.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question of him, or do you want us to wait?
Yes.
Okay, so how does it, does it address the sewer issue that they mentioned? Is that, is that an issue with this? Does it impact that at all?
So at this point, we don't know if to back and over the sewer. You can drive over the sewer. You cannot have a permanent object on the sewer. And so that question is out to Jefferson County now. We have not heard back on that. So at this point, unless somebody tells us otherwise, that's not an issue. It could be, but I don't think it is. And they might say something different. And I guess my, I don't have a chance to come back up here. But if they do say that it is an issue, Andy, the Piggly Wiggly owner, said he would be more than happy to move the building ten feet down. That does not change the floor plate of the building, and it gets it out of the easement, the twenty-foot setback. So there's multiple ways to solve this and make everybody happy. And I dare say, everybody in the audience and all the fifty letters you got, this plan would make everybody happy. And it's a simple compromise. They haven't compromised at all. Not on one issue.
So just, so I understand, you're saying move the building to south ten feet?
That's assuming that there's an issue with Jefferson County.
How long have they, how long has that been in their hands?
We met, we met Thursday on-site with the developer, with the engineer, with
Store owner.
The store owner, a handful of people. We walked through the proposal, the site plan on-site, talked about grades, talked about backing up. And the only question they had, they were gonna make sure it fit on the site plan and go to the county. And we have not heard back. They have internally, but I'm not sure where that is.
Thank you.
So last request, we would just say for continuous to next month, and then y'all vote it up or down. But at least give the neighborhood residents a chance to work with them about a plan that works for both.
One quick thing to address, that Mr. Murray said that they don't want the trucks backing up by their front door. And I can tell you that I really understand why. Because we don't want them on our front door either and on our street and turning it into an alley. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thanks, guys.
So the applicant will be able to respond to all the questions and points raised once the public portion is finished? We'll ask you questions. You can address the points that have been raised at the end, yes?
Hello. I'm Elizabeth Vanderkamp. I live at eighteen twenty-four Lancaster Road. So I'm, my backyard is on Huntington and right by the turn to go up Courtney. And I'd just like to say how much I appreciate Dr. Witt and those people working so hard to come up with a plan. Because the noise pollution is of great concern. We already have a little bit where I am, so I don't really want any more. And I am a patient of hers and really ride my bike and walk in all those areas. So I would appreciate if there were lots of ways for the trucks to not have to just be on Courtney Drive. And this is tangentially related to that. But that path on Courtney Drive, if anybody's taken that behind the pig and behind, you know, CBS, I think is so dangerous. Because the gullies on either side, it's better now with those big houses and their garages. But if an SUV and another SUV, the chances of tipping over, so I just, if there're gonna be more trucks, I would ask that the council look at that street and that is actually zoned as an alley now and change it to a real street just for the safety of everybody, especially if there're gonna be trucks on it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Beverly LeBuff, six seventeen Edgemore Drive. When I was on the Board of Zoning Adjustments, Mr. Murray came before us twice. Twice for the, for a condo development on the corner of Firefighter and Huntington. The first time he came before us, it was a lot of neighborhood input. One of the main concerns, besides the density of the project and the need for variances on setbacks, was the amount of traffic that it would generate on the backside of Courtney. He left without a vote and came back later with another plan that had the same issue. The stormwater runoff, the traffic, the density, the problem on Courtney. This is even worse on Courtney. Because at least those people would have just been residential coming and going. I can see where Dr. Witt and the other businesses there on Courtney are very concerned about that traffic. If I was one of the, now there are four houses on Firefighter instead of the condo buildings. And I'm sure that they would be very concerned about having to, that's where they come out. There's no, they have no parking on the front. They park in the back. And if they want to access thirty-one or go to the pig or go to Dr. Witt's office and don't want to or can't walk, they have no other way to go. And then there's a truck sitting there, and they have to sit and wait. I think that's just an untenable situation all the way around for the residents on Firefighter, for the businesses on Courtney, and for the people coming and going on there. And I urge you to, if you can, put it off, work with them. If not, send it forth with a negative or no recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else want to come speak to this case? Okay, with that, we'll close the public portion of the case of the applicant, Mr. Legg. If you could come back up and field questions. And I think maybe, I know, I know you're ready to address some things that were stated a moment ago. If you want to start with that, then we can pick up with questions after that.
Well, if I could. It's apparent that I have different opinions of what Mr. Blackwell said and what that nice lady just came up and said about our older development that we proposed on Firefighter. We did address runoff, we addressed everything. But I feel like I need to go on record as saying that because, you know, what she heard was I'm somebody who doesn't care. And I do. And we had underground detention planned for that, but, you know, never had the chance to do it. So I just want to go on record as saying, I don't mind someone, you know, not agreeing with me. But don't put words in my mouth that tell me what I've said because I'm gonna take that very personal. So I have, Vic wants to address what was said. And Mr. Blackwell, I understand he's passionate about what he wants to do. But he has disagreed now with our engineer and our architect and told them both they don't know what they're talking about. And I appreciate the fact that Mr. Blackwell was a developer. And I appreciate the fact that Mr. Blackwell was a developer, I am too. But I'm not going to look at you and tell me whatever you do for a line of work that, you know, I don't believe you, you're wrong. I don't have that knowledge to do that. Especially if you're talking about an engineer and an architect. And that is what's frustrated us with Mr. Blackwell, is because he's kind of made it personal. And again, like I told you about the Piggly Wiggly, Andy, Andy has said he would do whatever that he can do, okay? Mr. Terry is the owner of all the property, okay? He bought Cameron's Corners, he owns the land where the pig is, he owns the land where the CVS is. He does not want the loading dock on the north side of the building, because it interferes in, in his belief with everything going on at Cameron's Corners. He doesn't think that's the way to do it, and plus, he's worried about the people coming into the front door of the Piggly Wiggly, right there on that northeast corner, with a truck backing up there. Slade talks about the truck backing up on the south side of the building, that's where we have asked for you to approve. But on the north side of the building, you've got people coming into the front door. You don't have that on the south side. And when she talks about trucks stacking and doing all that, I agree. It's been a mess, it hadn't been addressed, but we're here to address it and make it better. That's why we're here. We're going to have less truck deliveries. We're going to make sure that once they get on Courtney at thirty-one, they have to turn right. They can't sit there and try to go across the, across the median. I think y'all are taking care of that in the council with some of the traffic studies you've done. So, I understand you have a tough job, and I appreciate the plight that, you know, Dr. Witt has, and, and Slade, and, and the folks there. I am sympathetic, I truly am. But if you look closely at this development and look at everything that, that we, I mean, again, we spent a year in due diligence trying to figure this out. And Mr. Terry can attest to that. So, but I want Vic to come up and, and talk, but also I want Jess to come first. Jess, if you would, and talk about engineering-wise, why you feel the north side is not a very good fit.
Hello, uh, Jess Cirkin, Shoal Engineering. All right, if you could, whoever has that, pull up the final development plan, I think that would be the best way.
Which one is that?
The one that has the numbers on the buildings.
It's the site plan, Brian, with one, two, three, and four.
Yeah.
Yep, that's it.
Yeah, that's good. All right, so what you can see, kind of going through the center of our site, uh, this is the san- the proposed sanitary sewer main relocation. Um, and it's in the dashed twenty-foot sanitary sewer easement. Um, it starts, uh, just north of CVS, kind of angles up, and then cuts between existing Cameron's Corner and the proposed Piggly Wiggly, and then ties to the existing main in Cook Street. And, um, so today, before the new building, what's happening is there's a main that comes north from Oxmore, and then actually angles directly underneath the proposed building. So as part of this, we have to relocate the sanitary sewer main, and then as part of that, also, all of these buildings that are existing, um, you know, make sure that they maintain service during construction, and then obviously for Cameron's Corner and CVS afterwards. And so, right now, um, this is what we feel is the best design for this. Um, all of the laterals for service come out the backside of these buildings. Um, we have it sloping to the main, and then routed to Cook Street, trying to keep the minimum slopes and the depths as shallow as we can while still meeting the county's requirements. And so, as, um, Slade mentioned, we met with them last week onsite, end of last week, and discussed what options there would be to consider the plan that they showed earlier, which was moving the dock to the north side. And, um, to kind of put it into perspective, what that looks like on the north side, the rendering that you've seen, um, of the compactor and the loading dock with the big wall, that would not be possible on the north side, um, just from, can't put something like that kind of structure in the sanitary sewer easement. And so what we requested the county to consider was eliminating that kind of structure, and it was even just like a hydraulic lift. And got their feedback this afternoon, and just after their initial review, I'm not going to speak and say this is a, gone through full approvals with the county, but their initial review, seeing a cut sheet of that product, and the map of where this is with the proposed building and the existing building, those constraints, we just have that twenty-foot easement. They did not see the lift being allowed in their easement, which would not really offer any opportunity to have loading and unloading operations on the north side of the building, as that's currently shown. If you were just to try to move the loading dock there, as currently designed, it would not be approvable. And then I can't speak for, you know, operations of internal building, I'll let Vic kind of weigh in on, on that. But that's kind of where we are, just initial review from the county. And they typically don't allow any sort of structure in their easements, not even like a chain link fence, so the, they did not want that lift in their easement. Are there any other questions on this sewer? Proposed, yes, so the, like, the existing sewer right now currently comes south down Drake Street, and then kind of diagonally goes right through the center underneath the proposed building. Which obviously we couldn't have sewer running under the new building. It's kind of, this, it's kind of a blur, right above like the number one on the proposed Piggly Wiggly is where the sewer today goes to Cook Street.
And it challenged us with the rate issues?
No, so actually, if you were to try to look at routing it all, like, you know, around the other side, you get very deep, um, to the point where it might even require more than a twenty-foot easement, especially where we're right by that, where that R five, the southwest corner is. Those apartments right there, their building is only ten to fifteen feet off the property line. And, um, there'd be some concerns there with the depth that that sewer would get, and then trying to construct it that close to their building. But no, there's, that's, as it's currently shown, there's no concerns.
So, I see a plight, it looks like the sewer currently is the most diagonal. Where are you proposing sewer to move to?
So, if you see that, uh, it's in the dashed kind of box. It just goes around, it goes from the north of CVS, and then it goes diagonally to the left and up, and then over the north side of the building, and of the new Piggly Wiggly, between the Piggly Wiggly and Cameron's Corner, and ties to Cook Street.
And it always serves CBS?
All of, all these buildings.
So, all?
Yes.
But all, all of these buildings, that sort of, that whole sewer pretty much?
Uh, there's not, like, the existing main that comes from Oxmore down, uh, existing Drake Street. Um, the county's mentioned that, we'll do a video inspection, there may be some further north, um, but that wouldn't, we're not going to be changing anything there. So everything for this new main would be this site.
Is that something that they're going to put into a report officially, or a decision officially, or is that just?
So we'll have to, um, once we, you know, after a final development plan be approved, there's still several different, you know, we have to get sanitary sewer approval from the county, that's another, we'll have to submit formal plan and profiles for the main extension.
I'm asking about the proposed, the compromised location of the loading dock, you know, asking the county for their opinion on that. And I hear what you're saying, is that something that they're going to put into an official report, or something officially for consideration?
I can, I can ask, I mean, this is like, again, I said, I'm not trying to speak for anybody, but just after, just running this by them, and just their initial feedback, you know, knowing that these are their rules, nothing a twenty-foot easement, and then after reviewing it, they didn't see why this would be an exception. So we can definitely follow up on getting them to provide more on that.
Are there any other concerns other than the sewer easement with that location?
I will let the architects speak to operations. And then again, like, uh, Murray was saying, one of the biggest things is the Cameron's Corner drive-through.
Mr. Chairman, I would mention that, uh, both sides have invoked Mr. Vaseglio, and so I think this commission would like to hear from Mr. Vaseglio himself directly. I know he couldn't be here tonight, um, but as both sides have referred to things that he has said, I think it would be wise for us to hear directly from him.
I would definitely second that. I think, um, you know, I'd like to hear from him personally. So, um, I myself personally think we should vote for a continuance.
Well, I, I think, without any sort of absolute clarity on the sewer issue, I mean, I'm, I hear what you're saying about the drive-through Hunter's Cleaners, but, and I hear what you're saying about not wanting trucks to bother Cameron's Corners, but, but the flip side of that is you'd have trucks on Courtney interfering with those businesses. I think those two issues, I think, are...
I'd personally like to see that report in writing.
Me too.
I mean, that would put a lot to rest.
From the count?
Yes.
Yes. Agreed.
Can I ask a question that, about the truck?
Oh, sure.
So, the way that you have the trucks routed, they would come down and like drive right in front of the entrance of the store, and then kind of skirt these parking places, and then back into the loading dock? So, you're going to have trucks coming in front of the entrance of the store?
Well, I guess my question is, would you rather run, drive in front of the store, or back up in front of the store?
Well, I would really not like to drive in front of the store, like the big trucks.
Can we pull that drawing up that's in the packet with the blue, um, truck?
And I guess the other question is, I mean, do many of these deliveries normally take place? Is there a way to limit?
Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Do many of these deliveries take place? Is there a way to limit deliveries to serve the home?
There is, and, uh, this is Andy's son, okay? And he's going to speak to, to some of the delivery issues, but, yes.
Andrew Vaseglio, affiliated with the Piggly Wiggly on Three Thousand Independence Drive. So when it comes to the operations of our trucks, I've, I've believed the term has been used "less trucks", the better way of putting it is, uh, lower frequency of trucks coming in, as our store exists right now with a lot of volume. We are having to be a very precise schedule, not able to really maneuver it, because we don't have a lot of backroom space, but a lot of volume coming in, right? So what we are looking at doing, and this is regardless of if we go to Courtney Drive, if it's wherever we're going to be working, or even having to stay in our own space eventually, wherever we end up, we're going to be able to hopefully gain more space. And with the operations side of it, okay? We can look at a timeframe, like we've done in other communities, Crestline, for instance, of having trucks come in, particularly the larger trucks, only between the hours of five AM to seven AM. That would not affect school traffic at all. In addition to that, we can look at doing more Saturday trucks. You're not looking as, at many DSD vendors, folks that are in our warehouse. So Coca-Cola was mentioned, beer wine vendors, Blue Bell, so on so forth. With those coming in on Saturdays, uh, along with other trucks trying to make sure we're not hitting as many weekdays. So a lower frequency of trucks would be the best way to put that, and it would be during a timeframe throughout the day, and our backdoor hours end at two-thirty, we ask trucks not to come until one-thirty at the latest, right? So it'd be five to seven AM, and then something like eight-thirty to one-thirty in the afternoon. Um, we've also worked with other communities in getting folks staffed up to help navigate the traffic, whether it's school traffic and crosswalks, or to actually stage the trucks to help them come in. So with a lesser frequency, we can actually organize the schedule that we're not going to have four eighteen-wheelers backed up trying to back in at the same time, but it would be an actual schedule as to when they're coming, able to back in, and it would be during lesser, uh, traffic times. So, I don't know if that helps answer your question, or?
Say about three to seven-thirty, then three to one o'clock?
Five AM is when we would ask probably our warehouse truck, or anything else, to show up. We have our employees getting there at five AM, so we ask it to be at our backdoor at five AM. I mean, that's always something we can talk about with the community, is what's going to work best when it comes to school hours. Seven AM is what we ended it at over there, seven-thirty's what we tried, and we ended up going to seven.
And what's the problem with bringing them on the backside of the building?
The backside of the building?
Yeah.
It's just from this in general right now?
Yeah, I mean, if, if the sewer problem is...
When there are higher...
And maybe just put the loading right on the backside.
Like a cut sheet? Yeah. Uh, so, if you pull that, uh, sorry, um, if you pull that, uh, development plan, the site plan back up, you can kind of see, so Cook Street, right now, it's only a twenty-foot right-of-way, and also terminates, uh, the right-of-way does, just north of the apartments where you see in the bottom southwest corner, that R five. So the right-of-way actually ends, so if they were to turn on to Cook Street, there's no through to connect, um, you know, the Cameron's Corner is existing building, there's, there's not the proper clearances for a truck to navigate on Cook Street and try to make those turns around the buildings. And there's also just, uh, significant grade change, uh, further south that wouldn't really allow for a loading dock to be located on the backside. But it's only twenty-foot right-of-way, which is, means there's even less of actual paving of the road, which is pretty narrow for the eighteen-wheeler.
How long is it for, at least, for, uh, CVS?
Two years, two and a half years. And I trust we tried very hard to get them to live, and, uh, we have called, 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 and we've even had the maker come, and they won't return his money.
Let me kind of sum up one other thing we talked about a minute ago, and I understand your comments about speaking directly to Andrew Vaseglio. That's good. The way the stores are laid out is, it's a formula, it's not just something we do, it's definitely a heavy store. So for that reason, to put the loading dock on the other side, if you could flip the building, that would be one thing. We can't because of CVS. So therefore, to get the flow into the major storage areas, it needs to come from this end where the loading dock is. There are other things already built into the plan on the north end that would put the loading into a very small hallway, rather than the area we set aside for storing. So that's just an overview for the operation of the store, to make it more efficient, to make it work.
If I could just close with one thing, uh, we appreciate very much you listening to us. And we don't have a problem continuing this for another month. And it'll give us more time to meet with Slade and anyone else, or to answer some of your concerns. We truly want to make this work for as many people as we can. And, but as I said, we all want a larger pig in the area, and there might just have to be some, as Slade said, some give and take of how we get that done. I'm, I'm sorry, sir.
One last question I've got. So, a hypothetical that you say, we look forward with it, that all the deliveries have to be for seven, something like that. Is that something that the city can actually force, or is that...
We would need a police to, to some degree. It wasn't actually city ordinance, city ordinance in Mount Brooklyn.
It was, or was not?
It was, when we first opened that store. And we're looking at also bigger trucks, we can't get every single truck in each other day in those two and a half hours, but we would focus on larger trucks coming in at the first part of the day, or the smaller trucks coming in a little later, and still operating within a timeframe of our backdoor hours, before we eliminate the congestion within a minute. a downtown.
So 18-wheelers should be there by 7:00. And how's that work at impressive? Is there any issues with the half-hours or?
It, it, it's gone up and down, it has, yeah, I mean, it has had been issues at different times. And you can, I'm sure all of you've been there and seen how congested it is and they're able to navigate their way out of it. But we have seen it being an issue or had customers let us know that it's an issue, we handle their vendors as quickly as possible. You know, over the last three years, we've had more inconsistencies with deliveries than we ever have. And unfortunately, at times we've been trying to get it in regardless, just to be able to fill our shelves. But it has gotten better over the last, you know, six to eight months and that sort of thing, but it's something that we've worked with our partners and our vendors to be able to do.
Andrew, could you tell us about, I know, I heard from some of the neighbors on Courtney Street that your dad told them about when Crestline was being built and you had to make some changes to sort of accommodate the neighbors there and the neighboring businesses there. Can you tell us a little bit about what that was all about?
I wasn't a part of all those conversations, I know.
Can he step up to the mic, please?
Yeah, I, I wasn't a part of all those conversations. So I wasn't, I'm not sure of exactly everything that was discussed and changed. I do know that there were a similar process to what we're dealing with now and talking with the community and trying to figure out what, what works best. And I do know that there were some changes. I can't speak to exactly what all of them were.
That would be more information, I would want to hear from Mr. Versiglio as well. So if he could come in person, thank you, I appreciate it.
I think one, one more issue that we kind of talked about up here, and I think she was getting at as well, was that this blue, the truck coming in diagram, there are 10 parking spots, and that's something I noticed before Slade came up and Dr. Witt. But there are 10 parking spots that are affected by the truck taking that left-hand turn onto the road there to back into the spot. So clearing those, you know, making sure there's no cars there, that's certainly a concern if those are actual legitimate parking spots.
They do that same thing with Crestline, how you have to block off the spaces once you go between.
Yeah, so with, I mentioned earlier about having some folks that can be in the parking lot to help navigate what's going on out there from the traffic flow. So we've had two different, two different productions going on in that regard, right? We've had actual employees at times helping with crosswalks and kids going to school in Crestline. And we've also had parking lot attendants that have helped out with the actual parking, and I'm talking everyday parking as well. So we have various signs that we've made and we implement them in many stores and you can actually see them in Homewood right now that's, you know, for Piggly Wiggly customers only, if you will. And then we'd be able to block off those spots with an attendant out there who would help to navigate everything and make sure nobody's parking in that spot. That would be an obstruction to any trucks trying to get out at that particular time.
So can you control the other vendor trucks or is it just the people with the trucks that you can?
From a scheduling standpoint, we can ask them to come at certain times. And unfortunately, if they come after hours, we have to turn it away. And it's not good for our business, but it is, you know, twofold. It's something that they understand that they have to get there at a certain time, but it's also going to make sure that we're not doing anything that we don't need to do that we've promised otherwise, right? So they're all partners to us and we all operate in good faith. And if we see that there's an issue in that regard and we ask them to call us if they are going to be late in any way, shape, or form, so we know, you know, if we have to have somebody hold back at times from an employee standpoint or if there is issues like this in whatever store it is, that we can try to make adjustments before there's any issue that arises.
I guess in closing is that I think it's probably a good idea if we move this forward another month. So if, you know, if you're in favor in that, we would take that opportunity to meet with, you know, some more residents and business owners and try to come up with a, you know, solution, so. I think you, I think the members of the commission agree with that. I think we have some unanswered questions that I think could affect how we view this, but I think the most important thing is what you just suggested is, you know, get everyone on the same page as much as you can. I mean, I think that's, that's very important, so. That's fine. Thank you all very much for listening to us, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And just for clarification, that continuance would apply also to the second actual rezoning case, since they're related.
Correct. And that, that meeting, what's the date of the October meeting?
I don't, uh, 7th, I think?
October 7th.
Well, you need to look at a calendar.
Somewhere around there.
Yeah. First, first Tuesday. Firstly.
It's the 3rd, October 3rd. October 3rd.
What a memory. Continue.
No, 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 we're not adjourned yet. All right, well.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We have a, we have a little more business to attend to, so if, if you're going to discuss this, I would ask that you go out into the hallway. Thank you. Okay, so next on the agenda, we have recommendations from the nominating committee for the positions. All right, excuse me, I'm, I know, I know there's a lot of wrapping up to do, but we have some more business to take care of. So you're free, you're free to go, but if you stay here, we just be respectful of the fact we still have a couple of agenda.
That's right. That's your punishment, that's your punishment.
Okay, so next on the agenda is the recommendations of the nominating committee for the positions of chairman or chairperson and vice chairperson. And Mr. Harwell, you're the chair of the nominating committee. Has the nominating committee reached any recommendations or recent conclusions about recommendations? Okay, are there?
Second, do I get the second thought, second?
I vote yes.
Are there any other nominations from the commission?
Any other nominations from the floor? All right.
Okay, all right, well, that being said, it, all in favor of Mr. Armstead remaining as vice chairman?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Can't be you either.
All in favor of, of?
Aye.
Yes, sir, yes.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion to adjourn. Communications from the staff. Communications from the staff.
I've only got one.
Oh, no, no!
Just 30 minutes, that's all it takes. So.